Let's go ahead and get started. This is the Douglas County Planning Commission, August 10th, 2021. And we will start with the call to order in the determination of a quorum. We have five members present in the historic Douglas County Courthouse. And I believe, Kristi, I can see you on the Zoom part of the meeting. If you could confirm your attendance that you can hear us, so we can hear you as well?
Yes, confirmed. I'm on.
Thank you very much. And at this point, I believe Nick is absent. I'm not sure if he has been delayed. But we will go ahead with the meeting and hope he can join us shortly. So Brian, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
...to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brian. We will start with public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Planning Commission. Additional public comment periods may be allowed on individual agenda items at the discretion of the chairperson. It is requested that members of the public comment on those agenda items when they are considered. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will be also taken on each item listed on the agenda when they are discussed by the Planning Commission. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker on matters over which the Planning Commission has jurisdiction, supervision, or control. The Planning Commission wants to encourage the respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack, or interfering with the rights of others, the individual will be asked to stop. So we will begin public comment. The microphone at the podium, and there's a sign-in sheet. If you would please state your name and write your name on the sign-in sheet, and then begin your public comment. We have timing lights that will indicate when you're down to a half a minute left, and then the timing light will go red when you're three minutes, and you should conclude. So if there are public comment, again, if you have comment on the individual agenda items, if you would hold those until those agenda items are considered. But if there's general public comment on issues of jurisdiction with the Planning Commission, you can begin now. Okay. Seeing no public comment, then I will close public comment, and we will come back to the next item, which is approval of the agenda. This is for possible action, approval of the proposed agenda. The Planning Commission reserves the right to take items in a different order, to combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and to remove items from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. We do have four items on our agenda today, and they are listed in the notice. So I would entertain a motion from members of the Planning Commission to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Maureen moves approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Bryce seconds approval of the agenda. I will call for a public comment if there is any public comment on the agenda. If anyone would have comments on the agenda as an item, seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment. Then is there discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the agenda say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Kristi. Any opposed to approval of the agenda? Seeing none, then the agenda is approved, six to zero. We'll move on to the minutes. This is for possible action, approval of the draft minutes of the Planning Commission, July 13th, 2021. I would note that there are 72 pages of those minutes. They were put in supplemental comments and not in the original agenda package. So that's where the content of the minutes. And I will, I guess, first open this for a public comment, and then we can come back to the board for comments and a motion. Any public comment on approval of the minutes? Seeing no public comment on approval of minutes, I'll close public comments, and we'll come back to the board for a motion or comments on the draft minutes. Maureen?
I'll move adoption of the minutes with the corrections that were submitted.
Thank you very much, Maureen. Has approved, moved to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mark seconds approval of the minutes. Any discussion on approval of the minutes? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote on approval of the minutes. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the minutes are approved, six to zero. So we'll move on to the first of the agenda items. And I will read this into the record. This is for possible action, discussion on whether to amend the Planning Commission bylaws to require commission members to attend meetings in person, subject only to limited exceptions. Maureen, you have requested this agenda item, so I will turn it over to you for a short discussion or comments, and then we'll move forward from there.
This is strictly a policy decision on the part of the Planning Commission. In light of NRS 241, which allows for electronic participation in Planning Commission meetings, and the confusion with the changes that have been made to that NRS provision over the years, and especially over the COVID crisis, for lack of a better word, over the last couple of years, there's been some confusion as to whether boards and commissions should be meeting in person, should they be meeting on Zoom, which is quite expensive for the county to be providing, should the public be invited to participate on Zoom or in person, and so on and so forth. In looking over our bylaws on Package Page 12, we do have under 4.7, a portion that says attendance and preparation. It says, "Planning Commissioners shall make a diligent effort to attend all meetings," and that's all it says with regards to attendance. I believe that, and I personally believe, we need the public interaction between ourselves and with members of the audience and the public. It's important to look at each other, to read body language, for everyone to see us. And it's not the same if you're looking at a black screen, someone on a black screen, a name on a screen, a photograph on a screen, or just hearing a phantom voice. I believe that the electronic participation has come in handy when someone is traveling, when someone has had an illness, a surgery, or when weather has interfered with the ability for elected officials or commission members to travel across the state in order to participate. But I don't believe personally that electronic participation was put into place in order for convenience. And those are my personal feelings, and I'd like to hear how the rest of the planning commissioners feel. I'm okay with it one way or the other, but I felt it was important that we have this discussion as a commission, because I believe we are paid by the taxpayers of Douglas County to be present and to answer to them and to allow them to see us. And I believe that we have to answer to them and to each other for our participation.
Thank you, Maureen. We'll open it up to other members of the Planning Commission for comments, questions, or suggestions.
I'd like to make a comment first, if I could.
Yes, Kristi, go ahead.
Yeah, Maureen, this is a great topic, and I'm glad that we've brought it up, because I believe there's a bigger discussion that we need to have as a community in relation to how we currently run our Planning Commission and our Board of County Commissioner meetings. The one thing that is constant in life is change. Last year, communities around the world were faced with forced change. Status quo was no longer an option for doing the most basic activities of life. However, one of the great things that 2020 provided us was a free trial period for an alternative way to run and do government, a way that was inclusive to our entire community. Communities across the world were forced to trial technology that the business world has been using for decades. Prior to the pandemic, if a community had chosen to adopt new technology, it would have faced extreme scrutiny from all sides. However, with forced change, that barrier to entry was removed. We were able to change quickly and found a way to continue to do business at a very high level. One could argue that the master plan update that the Planning Commission completed last year would not have been reviewed in as great of detail or as quickly as we did had we held the meetings in person. When we went back to in-person participation only, we went back to excluding a large portion of our community from participating in their local government. We hold our Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioner meetings in person during the day when most of our community is at work or at school. That makes it nearly impossible for a majority of our community to actively participate and contribute their thoughts and ideas to the volunteer and elected leaders of Douglas County. While our community can still watch the live streams or recordings later, they are no longer able to actively participate in the outcome of our meetings. In the past, we can make the excuse that we didn't have the necessary means to allow for both virtual and in-person participation. However, now we don't have that excuse to fall back on. As leaders of our community, our actions are telling our family, friends, neighbors, and acquaintances that their voices are not important, because we're not choosing to find a way to allow them into our decision-making process that impacts their lives. Just because we've always done something a certain way doesn't mean it's actually working. It just means that our community has accepted that they have to choose between putting the food on the table for their family or participating in their local government. Unfortunately, the choice is simple for most families and members of our community. It's argued that humanity's next evolutionary challenge is to learn how to cooperate instead of compete. By doing so, we can finally start to solve our local, national, and global problems. We, as volunteer and elected leaders, need to set the example for our community that we choose to be cooperative and inclusive to everyone. That starts by rethinking how we do business and creating forums that allow for everyone in our community to attend and have a voice, a real voice. That could mean mixing up the type, location, and times of our meetings, offering virtual and in-person meetings, holding some meetings at 6:00 PM on a weeknight, or at noon on a Saturday. I know change is not a popular word in our county, but the truth is that change happens regardless of if we take action or sit back and let it happen to us. What if, instead of constantly being reactive to forced change, we started thinking proactively and started to dictate how we can choose to change together as a community instead? As you can see, I've chosen to attend the Planning Commission meetings virtually. My primary reason for remaining virtual is that I know how difficult it is for businesses and governments to change. If I had gone back to attending in person, we would no longer have a constant reminder of how successfully we did do business in our community virtually last year. We wouldn't be talking about how leaders and community members actually attend these hearings if I'd followed suit and joined everyone else in returning to the traditional in-person-only forum. Making our local government an inclusive process is a scary proposition. It means we're going to have new members of the public show up and comment at our meetings, making our meetings less predictable, which could result in us feeling uncomfortable with the unknown. However, as public servants, our level of comfort can and should not be our primary focus. Or we need to ask ourselves, are we the right leaders for our community? We are not just public servants to one specific group or a couple groups. We are public servants to every age, race, and gender in our community. If it takes the Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners to be uncomfortable to create positive change in our community that could eventually lead to bringing our community together, then I'm all for it. If we can get to a place that makes every person feel like they are not only welcome, but that they have a voice and that they will be heard, then that would be a huge victory for all of us. As public servants, our role is not to please everyone, but our role is to be inclusive and ensure that we consider everyone's position from an objective standpoint. If we can create that change, then that's when we, as a community, can finally start to come together and bridge the gaps between the sides. So many times, I've heard from the community, why bother participating when we know that they won't listen and nothing will change? That's in reference to both Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioner meetings. If they know that change won't happen, then yeah, why would they bother putting in the effort at all? In fact, the Planning Commission body here today has said on public record, why do we bother making recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners when our recommendation carries no weight in how the board ultimately votes and decides on policies? When we ourselves, as leaders of the community, are saying, why talk because our voices won't be heard? Are we not the pot calling the kettle black when we, in fact, refuse to provide every opportunity ourselves to hear the voices of our community members? Today's agenda item asks if we should modify the bylaws to require planning commissioners to attend meetings in person. By limiting how we do business, we limit who can participate as a volunteer and elected leader in our community, further promoting exclusivity in our own local government that is supposed to work for all the people. I fully support inclusivity. Thus, I'm not in support of any proposed amendments to our bylaws that promotes exclusivity in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Other members of the Planning Commission that wish to comment or ask questions on this issue? Maureen, did you have any other comments, or should we move to public comment on this? Thank you. We'll now open this issue for public comment. If you do have comments, please, again, come to the microphone, sign in, state your name, and we will hear your comments. So we're now open for public comment on Agenda Item Number One.
Jim Slade, I wasn't going to comment on this agenda item until I heard Ms. Kendall's lengthy speech. And there are two very separate issues here. One is the very narrow issue, which is the subject of today's agenda item, whether members should be required, with few exceptions, to attend meetings. Ideally, I think that that is what is best for the Planning Commission and best for the public, and so I would support that. Ms. Kendall, however, spent about 90% of her time talking about an issue that is not on the agenda, and that is whether the public should have the opportunity to participate remotely in meetings. And even though that's not on the agenda, since she spoke about it, I will too. I believe that that is in the public interest. And how that's done is up to the Planning Commission. It can be by Zoom, which it has been for much of the last year, although often with Zoom, at least with the board lately, they've taken to just putting the person's name up there and not their picture, which is fine. But then it's not really much different than just phoning in and leaving a message. So one of those two, I believe, should be allowed for the public, some of whom are working, some of whom it's inconvenient to travel here from Topaz or from Tahoe or wherever. I think you should make the opportunity available to them either by Zoom or by recorded phone message to comment on not just public comment at the beginning and end of the meeting, but every action agenda item. So that would be my suggestion on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Michael Avila for the record. I was not going to comment on anything, but Kristi's statement was by far the best thing that I've heard come out of any of these commissioners' mouths, whether the Board of Commissioners or this Planning Commission, in a long time. For a long time, I've been talking about how a lot of the boards fail to recognize that there's a group of people out there that are struggling and suffering in this community, and they're completely ignored. All we hear is, oh, there's too many buildings, there's too much development, and that's been the narrative for so long, all the while there's people who can't buy homes, they can't rent homes, they can't live in the community that they've wanted to live in. So I'm glad that this person, Kristi, is pushing for this level of inclusivity. And I disagree with Mr. Slade that these are two very different subjects. I believe that they're part of one overarching subject, and that's the fact that this board, not necessarily for this iteration, but over time, and the Board of County Commissioners, has made an effort to support or recognize the concerns of one group of people, a small group of people who don't represent the majority of the people who live here. And so hearing Kristi's statement made me excited, invigorated, to start pushing for people who are my age and in my group, the working class, younger, and there's not a lot of us here, for a lot of the reasons that this board and the Board of County Commissioners has caused. And so I'm glad to start being able to push for them to be involved through Zoom. And if Kristi has to do that through example, because isn't that what leadership is, is showing through example how we can make change in our community, then I will support her and anybody else who makes this type of measure. So no, it isn't something that's irrelevant. It isn't two different issues. It's one big issue that affects this community at large, not just a small group of people who happen to be vocal, who happen to not have a job, to be able to have to work, to come in during these uncomfortable hours that are 1:00 PM when most of us are working. I'm lucky that I'm on my lunch break, and I happen to be in the building, and that's great, because I can come and talk. Not a lot of people have that ability, because unfortunately, they're too busy, or they don't have flexible jobs, and they don't live here because they can't. So thank you, Kristi, for making a statement that I've been trying to make for years now, and I am overly excited, and I won't contain my excitement, that someone is talking on behalf of inclusivity, and hopefully we can start making this board and the Board of County Commissioners start hearing the statements of the majority that are, there's a problem in Douglas County, there's a housing crisis, and people can't live here, they can't buy here, and like I've said before, isn't that what the American dream is based off of? And so really, the American dream does not exist in Douglas County, Nevada, for the majority of its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners, public. My name is Barbara Smallwood. I do have a job, and I still manage to participate in, be at public comment in any way. I think that when the Board of Commissioners appointed you each as Planning Commissioners, they expected you to conform to the NRS and be in the public view. If you need to schedule a meeting at a different time for more public participation, that's always available. Having knocked on many, many doors through many, many years in this community, the people that want to participate will. They will call you. The county commissioners have their telephone numbers on the websites. I don't think you guys have yours, but there is a means to communicate with you. Anyone has an open door policy. The open meeting law in Nevada is very clear on what can happen and what can't happen. People that choose to participate will. Thank you, and I'd like to see everybody's face.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment on this agenda item? Seeing no additional public comment, we'll close public comment, and we'll come back to the Planning Commission. At this point, we can have further discussion on this issue, or we can move to any recommended motion that is of interest to the members of the Planning Commission. Open it for questions, comments, or a motion. Brian?
So again, as a businessperson, just like Mr. Avila and Kristi, you know, I take time off to come to these meetings. I have addressed a lot with my clients, you know, would you attend these meetings? And all of them say, if I'm not working. You know, people in this community forget that less than half of us have to work to live here, and that's only because most of us are retired, living in these homes, and we're paid for. And so we're making it impossible for the rest of us to even support the others of you that live in the rooms and come eat at our restaurants, get your accounting done in our office, financial advisory services, whatever it may be. The rest of us aren't going to be here if you guys continue to do this to this community. I think we need to include everyone, and if we can offer public comment through Zoom or create some sort of way to allow the comment to happen outside of this room, I think it could only benefit us if we have more comment. I don't think it does anything detrimental to us to have more comment. I mean, on the subject of Kristi being out, I mean, I think it's effective. I mean, we did an entire master plan amendment from our offices, our homes, wherever it is. I mean, how many hours did we spend on that, guys? I mean, it was ridiculous. But we did it, and we're still here, and we have a master plan that's approved. I mean, luckily. So, you know, I think that we need to look into the technology and including people in other ways. And if we put a monitor over there so that Ms. Smallwood can see Mrs. Kendall, you know, that'd be one way to get through, be able to see their faces.
Thank you, Brian. Other members of the Planning Commission. Mark?
Well, I will echo what Brian said. I think it's very important that the public be able to participate in the meetings in any way, shape, or form. I personally like the fact that the commissioners do get together. I'd like to see, you know, Kristi's expressions when she's talking about something. So I'm kind of torn.
Thank you, Mark. Bryce?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Coming back to the issue at hand is, you know, discussion on whether amend the Planning Commission bylaws to require commission members to attend in person. I mean, I'm old school, so I like the fact that, you know, we can see each other. At the same time, I think Kristi made some incredibly good points with respect to the community. I don't think we need to amend the bylaws to require commissioners to attend in person. It's contradictory to NRS. NRS allows for members to participate both electronically or in person. And I think we need to be able to provide commissioners and board members that opportunity. I would much rather Ms. Kendall be here electronically than not at all. And she's got a lot of great points that she brings to this commission, so I'm not hung up on whether she's here in person or not. I'm just glad that she's here. So, but with respect to the community, I think she raised some incredibly good points about us doing more in the future to include as many of the citizens of Douglas County as we can.
Thank you, Bryce. Very good comments all the way around. Maureen, did you have anything else that you wanted to add or discuss, or would you like to try a motion, or are there other comments from the Planning Commission?
I think this was a great conversation. I think it's one that's long overdue. I really enjoyed seeing Kristi's face. I think at the very least, if someone is participating electronically, that they be on camera. I think- I think, like I said, it's very important that we be allowed to see their face, to be able to read their expressions, and be more than a blank screen. This isn't just about Christie. This is about all of us when we're not participating. If we don't have a reason why we can't be more than a screen, we need to talk to the Chair. Personally, I have a health condition that the light from the screen when we were doing the master plan, I was off-screen a lot because the light from the camera triggered some issues for me. But I try to be on-screen as much as I can. And I think that's something we need to recognize, that if we are participating electronically, the Planning Commissioners need to see each other, and the public needs to be able to see us. So I think that's something that we need to keep in mind. We need to be visible, we need to be accessible. And I think those two things, if we keep them in the front of our minds every time we get together, they will make a big difference for us as Planning Commissioners and for the public at large. Thank you all for participating in this conversation.
Thank you, Maureen, and thank you for bringing this item forward. If a member would like to make a recommended motion, we can do that now, or we can conclude on this agenda item without a motion. Seeing no motion, then we will close Item 1 and move to Item 2. Item 2 on our agenda, I will read into the record, this is for possible action. Discussion on Ordinance 2021-1589, a zoning text amendment to amend Title 20.560, Building Permit Allocation System, including changes to the rollover of unused building allocations, limits to the use of existing project and individual pools, changes to eliminate banking and borrowing, as well as requiring a review of decennial census data and its effect on the future number of allocations to be distributed, and other related matters. As we usually do, we will start with a staff presentation on this item. Then I have asked two individuals to make presentations. These individuals have been involved in this issue for either a long time or in great detail. So we'll have presentations that will be made to the Planning Commission. Then the Planning Commission will entertain questions for the staff or the people who have presented information. We'll do that as we usually do. After the questions that go to staff and the presenters, then we will open it up for public comment. And again, public comment will be heard on this agenda item for three minutes per person. After public comment is closed, we'll come back to the Planning Commission for deliberation, any further questions, and motions on the material that's been presented to the Planning Commission in the packet. So unless there's any questions on how we'll proceed, we'll start with the staff. And Sam Booth and Tom Delair, please begin your presentation as you see fit.
Okay, good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. This is Sam Booth, Deputy Director of Community Development. Appreciate your time this afternoon to discuss Ordinance 2021-1589. We'd like to start out the presentation today with just a little bit of background as to why this item is agendized today before you, and some of the work that's been done in the past. Would mention, prior to the first bullet point on this slide, as the Planning Commission well knows, we've discussed growth management and the building allocation system quite a few times in the last year or so. Earlier this year, I believe February 9th, we had an agenda item for discussion and presentation on this, and staff presented data on where we had been historically on building permits and allocations, and where we were so far into the year at that time. As well as last year during the 2020 Master Plan update, and the growth management and housing element of the master plan, we had a thorough discussion on this subject as well. And more recently, on July 1st of this year, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners held a hearing and requested staff to make a presentation on this topic. And we did that, presented historical building permit data, as well as allocation data, a list of approved and pending projects, and had a thorough discussion with the Board of Commissioners. At the end of that meeting, the Board directed staff to bring back possible adjustments based on comments made by the County Commissioners at that meeting as a draft ordinance, and to bring that forward to the Planning Commission, and then, of course, to the Board. So, again, that ordinance, or draft, as drafted, 2021-1589, it contains revisions to address those issues that were raised during that discussion, and comments that were made specifically by each Commissioner. So, just to, I'll start walking you through the proposed changes that are in the draft ordinance. The first change that you'll notice in the red line changes there is to Section 20.560-J of Definitions. This section is amended to include a clarification that accessory dwelling allocations issued to an individual property owner or individual contractor are issued individual allocations. And I note in the staff report, this practice was implied before. Essentially, the ordinance was silent on it. But I added this, and this was just an inclusion solely from the staff, that I think some clarification here will help not only the public, but staff that are issuing allocations. From time to time, questions are raised about an accessory dwelling that's being built in a subdivision, and whether or not, because it's in a subdivision, it requires a project allocation. Almost all times when this is done, it's after the developer has moved on, the lots are all sold, the homes are built. And these are individual property owners requesting to add an accessory dwelling, maybe above a garage or in another detached structure. So, as we interpret the code, because those are issued to an individual, it is an individual allocation that should be issued. And so this section is just clarifying that. Beyond that, Section 2560-060-H is amended to include language directing the Board of Commissioners to review decennial census data when it's released to determine if the 2% growth rate included in the ordinance should be adjusted in the future. This change was suggested through public comment, actually, at the Board of Commissioners meeting. Staff reviewed our notes from the meeting and felt that reviewing the census data, once we have that, could be a good idea and should be looked at. However, in a few slides I'll show, we do have some proposed revisions to this section, and I'll discuss that with you. Moving on, the next change is to Section 20.560-110B. This section is amended to state that allocations will be issued annually for each calendar year. This is rather than quarterly for each fiscal year, which is how it's outlined in the current ordinance and was originally intended when the ordinance was drafted in 2007. This change is consistent with a current staff procedures and previous direction from the Board of Commissioners with Resolution 2009-1278, which directed staff to issue allocations annually per calendar year. And so, that's a practice that's, again, easier for staff, because our fiscal year doesn't align directly with our calendar year. Issuing quarterly allocations can be quite confusing, and it was there in the initial few years of the ordinance. So we're requesting to issue those annually per calendar year. The next section of the ordinance proposed to be amended is 20.560-110C4. This section's amended to state that excess allocations remaining at the end of each calendar year will be surrendered at the end of the year and will no longer be carried over to the project or individual pools. Additionally, this language limits the issuance of allocations from each of those pools, the individual pool or the project pool, as they exist today, to no more than 10% of the allocations within the pool. So, I give an example in the staff report that as of June 30th, the project pool contained 581 allocations. Therefore, in the first year, the next year, no more than 58, which would be 10%, could be issued from that pool. This revised section also contains language that any allocations remaining in the individual project, individual or project pool, would expire after 10 years in December of 2031. We had some discussion, I think we had a suggestion by a Commissioner for this. That's why the language is included. However, this is another point that I have a recommended change to the ordinance, I believe, to remove that language. So I'll touch on that in just a moment. But, the idea of the 10% being issued from the pool coincides with the expiration of vested projects, at least the expiration that was accounted for in the allocation system. And so, when the Growth Management Ordinance was first approved, the Board, in approving the ordinance, identified that there were vested projects that had quite a few units to build out, and they anticipated it would take 25 years for those units to build out. So there was a 47% reduction of the overall number of allocations in that first 25 years. And so you'll notice in 2032, if you see the allocation table in the packet, in 2032, the total number of allocations available to be distributed makes a large jump by 47%. And so to coincide with that, we are hoping that the project pool and individual pool be used before that large jump occurs in 2032. And again, these are comments that staff received from the County Commissioners. Under subsection F of this same section, 2560-110, language is added here to state that allocations are forfeited due to failure to secure a building permit with one year, within one year, may only be redistributed within the year the lapse or forfeiture occurs. And you'll notice in this section in the ordinance, there was, there is already language that says that an applicant has a year to secure a building permit, and that if they don't secure a building permit within a year, they forfeit the allocation. The only change that's made there is that the previous language states that when that allocation is forfeited, it rolls back in to be distributed in the future. And as we are not allowing any new allocations to be rolled forward into a pool or to future years, I just specified directly in the ordinance here that it can only be redistributed in that year that it's forfeited. So if it's, if there's time left in the year, if it's June, July, August, and it's been a year since an application was pulled, if they weren't able to secure a building permit, they would forfeit that, and then there would be one more that's available to be distributed that year. Okay, the next section you'll notice in the ordinance is a total strike-through of a section which relates to banking and borrowing. And this is 20.560.150. We had some discussion with the Board of Accounting Commissioners about this procedure, banking and borrowing. There was actually quite a bit of confusion by the public and a few Commissioners about the procedures for banking and borrowing. Essentially, what this is, as it was described in the ordinance, is to allow a developer or a builder to be able to pull allocations from a future year. When allocations are all used up and exhausted for the current year, they can borrow from a future year. And it's laid out, just about 40% is all that's allowed to be borrowed from a future year. However, the ordinance calls out that in order for that to be approved, a development agreement has to be approved by the County Commissioners and that developer. So, number one, I think we think it's redundant. If the County Commissioners want to change any portion of an ordinance, typically, you can do that through a development agreement. So it may be possible that with a signed development agreement, this could still occur. However, its inclusion in the ordinance, we think, is confusing. A lot of people, I think, refer to banking and borrowing as the process of using allocations from the excess pool, borrowing from the pool. And the ordinance really doesn't refer to it in that way. So this is a simple strike-through of this entire section to remove it out and remove this procedure from the ordinance. So as I mentioned, we have a few proposed changes that staff noticed after the release of the draft ordinance, in discussions with the public, with Planning Commission, and just clarifications that staff has noticed. The first one would be to that periodic review that we, I mentioned earlier, that there would be a decennial, a review of the decennial census data, and the Board would review the results of the data and determine if the total number of allocations be adjusted. You'll see, in the last sentence here, it says, "If the Board determines that the administrative procedures," and we added "or" the, and struck it, "of this chapter not affecting, the total number of allocations may be changed." The effect of this here, I think, that's been pointed out is that we want to still hold this to the fact that the total number of allocations cannot be changed based on a review of the census data. Elsewhere, and later in the ordinance, it describes that no change to the overall 2% growth rate may be made without, about, going back to the voters for a discussion and a ballot initiative, because that's where the 2% originally arrived from. So that wasn't the intention here. And we didn't want this section of the ordinance to conflict with that 2% section there. So I'm suggesting to remove that last strike-through language, and then the new language would read that if the Board determines that the administrative procedures of this chapter not affecting the total number of allocations, the key there, "not affecting the total number of allocations," must be changed based on its review. The changes may be made by the Board in the form of an ordinance at any time. That language had already been included in the draft there. Here, the second proposed change is to 20.560-010C4 of the procedures. Essentially, what we're looking to do here is to remove a sentence which says additionally, "If the issuance of these allocations from the individual and project pools does not result in the elimination of allocations from their respective pools within 10 years, any remaining allocations would be surrendered on December 31 of 2031." So this is referring to the 10% being issued from the project and individual pool each year. So it's perceived at the end of 10 years that that pool would be exhausted. And we had included language that said, "If it's not, if there happens to remain an allocation or two in there, that those would be forfeited." However, again, because we don't want to affect the overall 2% rate of allocations, or that total number of allocations that have been given out, we don't want to require a forfeiture of allocations in any way. So I think striking that sentence that says that they would be surrendered on December 31, 2031, does that, and we will still have the language in there that says allocations issued from each respective pool will be limited to no more than 10% each calendar year.
If I can stop you right there, Sam, I think we have a typo that might be causing some people's confusion. On the top, you've got the proposed changes since the draft. You've got 20.560.010C4. I think that should be .110. It's the procedure section.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Apologies for the typo.
No, that's all right. You're doing a lot of work at the last minute, and we're scrambling on some of these things. And if I could just make the request at this point, and perhaps staff can be working on while we're going through the rest of them. It would be helpful, I think, if the members of the Planning Commission, the public, had these slides with the actual new draft language, because we're, we got a red line, we got strike-throughs, and then we're adding or deleting language in the one that you just discussed previously, the .060H, and then this one, .110C4. And I think you've got one or two maybe others. So if we could get copies of each of these pages and then have copies available for the public, I think that would be helpful and expedite our work when we get to it down the road. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I thought that was important to at least get that one part of it clarified. And then if we need to have these pages photocopied, if we could do that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you once again, Mr. Chairman. This is the last proposed change that staff has. And this is a change to 20.560.050 of Definitions. There were some questions about the language that's currently in the ordinance. The ordinance defines the individual pool, and it defines the project pool. And there's also a generic, I would say, generic definition for just allocation, and what an allocation. also a generic, I would say generic definition for just allocation and what an allocation is. But we don't believe that it explicitly defines the excess allocation pools, the excess allocation individual pool and the excess allocation project pool. So this would be to add a subsection S for a definition for excess allocation individual pool, and subsection T for excess allocation project pool, and then define those, which are obviously, those are the excess allocations that had rolled into the pool when they were unused allocations at the end of each year previously. I think the reason that there wasn't a definition for this was that when the ordinance was drafted in 2007, in that first year, there were no excess allocation pools until they grew over time. So we think we should put a definition just for clarity there. And then once we have that definition, that we should add it to 20.560.110D and E in order to better describe the difference between regular allocation issuance and excess allocation issuance from the pools. Again, I mentioned excess allocation is already defined as unused or unissued allocations available for issuance at any time out of their respective pools. So with all of those points, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, staff believes the findings can be made to approve the proposed zoning text amendment. The amendments incorporated within the ordinance simplify processes and public understanding as well as reducing the potential for a large sum of allocations to be issued in any one year, and rather will require those allocations to be gradually issued over a period of 10 years. And so your recommended motion, of course, with a few changes that were made today, would be slightly amended from your action sheet to say, recommended approval of ordinance 20211589 to the Board of County Commissioners with changes recommended by the Planning Commission. And as the chairman indicated, I believe we have two more presentations. If you'll bear with us as we, as we change to those presentations, and our director, Delair, is getting copies made of these, the presentation today with these proposed changes.
Thank you very much, Sam. That was an excellent presentation. And I'll deviate slightly from the plan of action that I proposed earlier as far as going right to the next two presentations, since you did cover a number of things. If there are any technical or procedural questions that you had of Sam Booth that don't really go to the content, because I'd like to keep the content and the subject matter debate to a time later, but if anybody did have any questions on the order that I was asking earlier for procedural or process questions, we could go ahead and interturn those, and then we'll move to the presenters. Mark Bryce, Brian, questions or suggestions?
So back to that 10% use, Sam. So when we have, say, let's say the number's 580, do we use 58 to the allocation pool, or do we use 58 or 10% of the remaining next year? Because we're literally writing something that's impossible to use every allocation. Because if we don't use 58 every year, and we use 10% of the remaining, we can't possibly spend all those, and they're gone as soon as we write this rule. That just doesn't sound right. We need to amend that language. Because if we make it impossible to use the units today, there is nothing that doesn't, goes away in 2031, it went away today effectively.
I think that's a good point, Member Oland. As this was drafted, and I think, I think the suggestion that we had heard that led to this discussion was 10%. And so my interpretation of that was 10% of whatever's in the pool. Totally recognize that obviously you're going to get down towards the end of that number, and you may have, let's say, six or seven allocations left in there, and 10% of that is not a whole number. The current Title 20, as written, does describe rounding, and for allocations, it describes rounding as well. So I think we would just defer to the rest of the code, which, which would say that we would round up if it's over, if it's .5 or higher, and round down to zero.
Well, after 10 years, I've got nearly 200 units left if we use 10% of the remaining allocation every year. We've cut out 300 units, or 200 units almost immediately upon writing the rule. Now, if the rule says that we use 10% as of the date of the law going into effect every year, that would use up the entire amount. But if we use 10% of the remaining, we won't ever use those up, and we're going to leave 200 that are taken off the board today.
I see what you're saying there. Yes, I think if I can go to that language here. Well, I can pull that up in the ordinance. No, the intent was for that to be distributed over 10 years. So that may be language that we need to clarify in the draft ordinance, and I can, I do have that with me today, so I can pull that up as we move forward. But that's, that was the intent, as I heard it from the discussion with the commissioners, that, and as we've described, that the 10 years, 2031 would be the last year of issuing the pool. So we need to divide the pool up over 10 years to be issued.
So I think that just has to be clarified in the way we say it, because when I read it, I think it leaves that portion of it possibly out. As of the date of the ordinance, you know, we should use something such as that that puts it in stone when that's calculated, and how it's actually going to get to zero, because I think if we make it so we don't get to zero, we're canceling those today.
Thank you, Brian. Very good point. Any other quick observations before we move on to the other presentations and then have some collective questions? Bryce, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Booth, can you pull up the proposed red lines based upon the changes you made today? Again, please.
So Commissioner Clutz, I have not made those changes in the draft ordinance yet, but the slides that I showed, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, just, just hold on there for a second. I just want to make sure I understand this. Okay, so currently, well, I'll tell you what, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to read it again. I'll save my comments for later.
Thank you, Bryce. I think these are important, again, as we go through the process to fully understand them, and if we can hear the other presentations, and then get a full understanding of each of these modifications, that'll expedite our work at some point. Brian, another quick comment?
So actually, I think you got it up right there, Sam. The allocations issued from each respective pool will be limited to no more than 10% each calendar year. I think that's conflicting with that first section that you have. So we're adding our strike through, and we've already addressed it before, and this one makes it a little muddy.
Okay, we can come back to some of these after we've heard the other presentations and public comment, but I think it's, it's good to get these out on the table, and then we'll determine what, what they mean and any improvements that need to be made in the language. If there's no other quick questions, then we'll move to Jim Slade and Aaron West. And Jim, would you like to go first? Okay. Everybody, I think, knows Jim Slade, and he has a good presentation that I think will include both his history and the history of the county in growth management. He was, as it says there, chairman of the Sustainable Growth Committee. They were very active in the early years, 2000 and beyond, as far as proposing initiatives and working with the county staff and county elected officials to get us to the Growth Management Ordinance that we have before us today. So I thought it was important to hear Jim's views, both as a community activist and as an individual who's probably spent more time and effort than anyone else in the county on this subject. So Jim, please proceed with your presentation, and then we'll move on to the next one.
Thank you, Jim Slade. And thank you, Chairman Walder, for this opportunity. I do have a lot of background in this issue, and so I think I'd be able to present an effective history of how this came about. I am currently the chairman of the Sustainable Growth Committee and have been for the last decade, but from its initiation in 2001, I've been on the executive board the entire time, although I was not the chairman either when SGI came about or when the discussions in 2006 and '07 took place, although I did participate in them. And on that working group, you know, we met every Friday morning at 7:30 in the morning before the start of business at the Minden Inn for nearly a year. And we had a very broad cross-section of interested parties, community development then headed by Mimi Moss, the building industry, the head of the DCBIA was there, other developers and realtors, Commissioner Dave Brady was there regularly, and occasionally another county commissioner. I'm pretty sure someone from the DA's office was there a good part of the time, and representatives, myself and two others from the Sustainable Growth Committee. So I was in the room where it happened. I'll just give you a short history of my understanding of the building permit allocation system. It was, as staff mentioned, put in place following the Sustainable Growth Initiative and the subsequent litigation. And briefly, just to go through that, you know, we collected over 5,000 signatures to get this on the ballot, which was about one out of every three people who voted in that election, signed a ballot to get that on, signed an initiative to get it on the ballot, as opposed to say last year, when those two referendums had less than 10% of the people who voted in last year's election who signed those petitions, just as a point of reference. We were challenged after we submitted and our signatures were verified by the clerk. We were challenged by developers to keep it from being put on the ballot. The county sided with the developers. A local judge sided with the developers and the county. The Sustainable Growth Committee appealed to the Supreme Court, who sided with us, and it went on the ballot, and it was approved by the voters of Douglas County. But before it was ever instituted, actually became law three days later, we were again sued by developers. Now, of course, you would expect the county would side with the developers, with the voters, not with the developers, but no, the county sided with the developers again. Again, the same judge ruled in the developers and the county's favor. Again, SGC appealed to the Supreme Court. It was no longer on an emergency basis, like whether it was going to be on the ballot or not, so it did take a couple of years until 2006, but when the Supreme Court finally ruled, they ruled essentially in SGC's favor, although it's not totally determinative, and they remanded it to district court with their rulings that agreed with most every point that SGC had raised. The county and the developers had not been interested in even discussing these issues with the Sustainable Growth Committee prior to that, because they had a judge's ruling in their favor. But when suddenly the Supreme Court ruled in our favor, then, oh, let's sit down and compromise, let's talk, why don't we all get together and figure something out here? So that's how those Friday morning meetings came about. As staff mentions on page 40 of their staff report, SGC was passed by the Douglas County voters, quote, "in order to control growth, protect water resources, and support the rural lifestyle of Douglas County." And what brought SGC, the Sustainable Growth Initiative, why that was commenced to begin with, was due to the perceived failure of the board to follow the 1996 master plan. So I'm going to go back to the 96 master plan and show you some of the things that were in that master plan that were being ignored by the board in those years. This is from the introduction, you've heard some of these before, and you'll see repeated references to certain aspects here throughout the next few pages that are all from the master plan. And all of these quotes, all of these statements are direct quotes or near-direct quotes from the master plan itself. I didn't put them all in quotes, but they are, for the most part, all quotes from the plan. And that 96 master plan, by the way, had massive public input, and it was quite reflective of the public interest. Whereas subsequent changes to the master plan, overall, I would say, have been more pro-growth due to staff, planning commissioners, and county commissioners who were more pro-growth in their outlook. But I, just today, I spoke to Bob Goh, who was on the Planning Commission in 1996 when this master plan was created, and to Barbara Smallhood, who was on the Board of County Commissioners that same year, and they both emphasized how much public outreach and public involvement there was, much more so than any other year. Anyhow, you've heard some of these things before. The theme, keep our rural character, was heard many times in many ways. Said that growth should be managed or directed and should occur at a pace that doesn't overwhelm or negatively impact the current attributes of the county. The county should live within its means, fiscally and environmentally, and not grow beyond the limits imposed by financial ability or natural resources, and that development should pay its own way and should not be a burden on existing residents. But in the Growth Management Ordinance, which of course is the element of the master plan that, obviously, where the Growth Management Ordinance and the Building Permit Allocation System is found, they talk about establishing policies to manage orderly growth, to coordinate new development with timely and efficient provision of services, in order to make the most efficient use of public resources, including financial resources, require that new development pay its fair share for the cost of facility expansion, ensure that new development be compatible with the county's limited groundwater resource, and wouldn't consume those resources in such a way that the county would be faced with a water crisis in the future, which is still a concern. The timing of new development and the facilities to serve it would have a significant impact on the public sector finance and could result in higher taxes, fees, and utility rates. That the potential public costs of poorly timed development justify public involvement in decisions affecting the timing of development projects, and the public strongly supported the concept that development should pay its own way for public services and facilities. And just because I like this quote so much, it is related to this subject, I will read it in its entirety. All areas not urban are considered rural. Because there's adequate capacity within a defined urban services area to accommodate almost all the residential growth that can occur within the limit of the groundwater resource and capital improvement capabilities of the county, there is no need to identify future urban service areas. That's from the 96 master plan, but those same words were still included in 2001 and 2007, when the Building Permit Allocation System was created. And there is a section in the 96 master plan which is titled Building Permit Allocation System, and this is so crucial to the discussion today that, again, even though I know you can all read it, I will read it also, because every word of it is important. In addition to directing growth to the places where it is most appropriate and consistent with the land use element, the county should control the rate at which growth occurs. Uncontrolled growth makes it difficult for the county to keep up with expanded needs for road, water, sewer, and other facilities. Unpredictable growth makes it difficult for the county to plan for the best use of its limited groundwater resource. In order to protect both the county's financial and natural resources, the county should adopt a Building Permit Allocation System covering residential uses. The allocation system will allow for a predictable growth rate, which provides for an averaging of peaks and valleys of growth over time. This provides for an orderly basis on which to plan on infrastructure and protect groundwater. And, you know, I should have put the entire quote in there, it's only a little bit longer, so I'll read the full quote of this section from the Building Permit Allocation System. Flexibility to allow banking of a limited number, limited number of permits from one year to the next, or for the county to obligate a limited number of future years' allocations if necessary. And that is put in there, and I emphasize the word limited in both those sentences, is to prevent an unpredictable growth rate, as described above, so that it allows the county to plan both its facilities, its infrastructure, and its finances to have a predictable growth rate there. At the end of that chapter, under the Growth Management Elements Goals and Policies, it includes managing growth in Douglas County at a level our natural fiscal resources can support, manage the timing and location of development to achieve the county's related goals, to natural resources, community character, and provision of public services, to direct new development to locations within or adjacent to existing communities, to designate distinct urban and rural communities. urban and rural communities, urban communities with urban services. And Douglas County shall limit the expansion of urban levels of public services outside identified urban service areas, and to accommodate new development at a pace which can be adequately served by available community, facilities, and service." Now, I said earlier that the county had failed to live up to all of those preceding pages, and I believe that they did. They did not control growth. There was an average of over 500 permits a year from 1996 to 2002, when the Sustainable Growth Initiative was put on the ballot. They also failed to limit new development at a pace that could be adequately served by community facilities and services, just to mention a couple. The roads during that time of high growth and higher income because of the growth, higher income for the county, they didn't get better, they got worse, despite increased revenues. And a number of our facilities became woefully inadequate. The senior center was completely unacceptable. Thankfully, years later, we did get a new seniors and community center, which I supported and I think is great. But at the time, for many years there, it was completely inadequate because of excess population growth. And the same was true and is true of our judicial and law enforcement center that many people have said, including the Sheriff's Department and the DA's Department, have said how completely inadequate it is for today's population here. When it was built, the population of the county was 20,000 or 25,000. Why do we need a new JLEC? It's not that it's that outdated, it's that it's too small. We now have twice the population, and it's completely inadequate. We have more criminal trials, more sheriff's deputies, and then it's just inadequate, and hopefully that will be addressed. It hasn't been addressed in the last 20 years, but hopefully it will be in the next few years because it is inadequate. But a number of these things go to show that growth doesn't pay for itself. You know, the new senior center, which I support, there's a large bond issue so that all residents will pay for it over time, and I imagine the same thing will be true for the new JLEC or expanded JLEC. But that means everybody pays for it when it's really the growth in the last number of years that has required those additional expenditures. They failed to present higher, prevent higher taxes, fees, and utility rates. Gas tax went up and a number of, variety of fees and utility rates increased. And there was a failure to limit the expansion of urban levels of service. The final straw, the one, if there's one thing I can point to that brought about the Sustainable Growth Initiative, it was the approval of the Clear Creek Development. It was not adjacent to any urban services, yet it was granted a Master Plan amendment to be a receiving area. It was in, all in forest and range land, and it had been identified in the Master Plan as the highest priority for preservation. So if you want to point to one decision by the board that led to the Sustainable Growth Initiative, that's it. Since the adoption of the Building Permit Allocation System, which had been over 500 a year up to 2007, the permits have averaged 122 a year. Now, we all understand the real reason for that. It's not the Building Permit Allocation System. It's something known as the Great Recession, and that had a terrible effect nationwide around the world. But it is also clear that the areas that it affected the most were the areas that had grown the most. Nevada had been the fastest-growing state in the Union for decades, and that's why it was hit the hardest, why it had the highest number, rate of foreclosures, unemployment, mortgages underwater, and economic hardship. And the counties, it's true county by county as well, the counties that had grown the fastest in Nevada were affected the most. Again, the most foreclosures, the most unemployment, et cetera, et cetera, the most economic hardship. And that included Douglas County, Lyon, and Clark. Those were the counties that had grown the most. They were the ones that were hit the hardest. The decrease from an average of 511 to 122 was a more than 75% decrease, which is the classic boom-bust cycle, which is really unhealthy for economies. And it has been a regular factor in Nevada life and in other Western areas, but it's never anything to aspire to. So the goals of SGI were, of course, to control growth to a level that our natural and fiscal resources can to support, to protect our vital groundwater resource, which is still at risk, to keep our rural character, which has been so important to the residents of Douglas County that it appears as the focal issue that's listed in the introduction to the Master Plan. But also importantly, the reason it's called the Sustainable Growth Initiative is that it's to prevent economically unhealthy boom and bust cycles. So the recommendations from staff, you know, it's a red-letter day when I agree with staff's recommendations, but I do believe that they have listened to not only the public, but also the Board of County Commissioners, and tried to come up with what I consider our common sense modifications to the Growth Management Ordinance and specifically the Building Permit Allocation System. Trust me, there are people out there, including some county commissioners, who have far more draconian suggestions that have come about. I consider these reasonable, modest, common sense changes, modifications. But you've heard about them from Sam, so I won't go over them at all. None of the suggestions from staff would modify either the total number of allocations or the 2% growth rate, and would therefore not be required to be placed on the ballot by the county for an advisory vote, as is suggested, as Sam mentioned, as suggested in 20.560.070. And I would note that that requirement was included in the ordinance at the request of the Sustainable Growth Committee. Some people wonder where that came from. It came from us because we were concerned that future boards would raise the growth rate or the total number of allocations, and we only wanted that to be allowed to happen if it went to a vote of the people. I would additionally recommend that all single-family dwelling permits require an Having said that, and done a bit more research, it is somewhat a question of semantics. If you look at Chapter 20.560.100, it shows that when these affordable housing projects or certain agricultural parcels are granted exemptions and not required to have allocations, it says, "When an exemption is allowed, it will result in an equivalent reduction in the number of allocations available." So it becomes a question of semantics. By them building a single-family dwelling, they take an allocation away or not. To me, it's cleaner if they are required to have an allocation. It makes it, makes more sense, but in effect, it's really a question of semantics, so I don't really care about that as long as the language in .100 is, continues. Other than that, I think that, you know, staff is on the right track with these suggested changes. So the mandatory final slide. If you have any specific questions for me right now, I'm happy to try to answer them, or if you'd like to wait till after the next presentation, and then you can ask any of us questions, but if you have anything for me right now that the chairman will allow, you can go ahead and do that.
Thank you very much, Jim. That was a good presentation. You've got a lot of history and a lot of knowledge, and we appreciate you bringing that to us. I would allow a quick question or two if people have one specific of Jim. If not, we can move on to Aaron and then ask our questions collectively. Brian, go ahead.
So like we get called out for changing our minds, Jim, the excess allocations were created by you and your group, correct, in the initial writing of this?
Correct. Well, not by me and our group, by the entire group, including developers, the Douglas County Building Industry Association, realtors, county staff, all of us, yes, not by us.
But you said yes.
By all of us.
And now today, you're saying no to excess allocations.
No, no. No, no. I'm not saying no.
You're saying you support staff in removing the excess allocations, so...
I don't believe that they're removing the excess allocations. They're just trying to...
But all I'm saying is, what I want to know is, what changed your mind as to the opinion of we had that 2% over 50 years cannot change even with excess allocations? We cannot exceed 2% growth for 50 years even with these excess allocations. Yet today, we have what seems like an agreement with county staff that those excess allocations need to go away. So is the Sustainable Growth Committee saying that we were wrong? 2% growth is too much? Why would those excess allocations need to go away if they achieve 2% growth? Please explain that and why we're changing our mind.
I don't think that staff's saying that, and I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that the excess allocation should go away. And the reason that I think what staff has suggested is a good idea is that in 2007, in April of 2007, when this ordinance was passed, nobody had any concept that the Great Recession was coming and that all of these excess allocations would occur. The Master Plan says that a limited number of allocations should be able to be rolled forward. The reason for, in my understanding, that the reason that staff is suggesting only 10% of them in a given year is so that we don't have the wild swings of up and down, the boom and bust cycle. We're still going to use all those allocations over the next 10 years. So, and, you know, it does seem like buildings coming back. That's okay. We want the 2% over time. They can use all those excess allocations. I don't think, I'm not suggesting that excess allocation should go away. I'm suggesting they should be used in an orderly fashion so that we have predictable growth, not uncontrolled or unpredictable growth, which the Master Plan said was unhealthy both for our aquifer and for our financial planning for infrastructure. So I don't feel like we've changed our mind at all. We maybe altered it a little bit due to the completely unforeseen Great Recession. That would be my answer.
I mean, when I look at the graph that he has up there, I mean, it says what you guys did work. You should be here patting yourself on the back, not changing your guys' mind. I mean, when I'm looking at a graph that is rising at a level that is not even close, we aren't even at one-half of the allocations we hit in 2005 through 2007. You know, I would say everything you guys did then worked, and then I don't understand why we would then come and change something that is working. We haven't even hit 262.
Well, the, I would say that the Growth Management Ordinance and the Building Permit Allocation System has had zero effect. The entire effect from 2007 to now, the reason that we are so far below the curve is because of the Great Recession. And you keep trying to put words in my mouth that I'm changing my mind. I haven't changed my mind at all. It's fine with me if we get...
I'm not saying we changed our mind, but if we have a 2% growth rate projected, and then we say that what was part of that 2% now goes away, we've reduced our growth rate from 2% down to 1.25, 1.3 over that same 50-year period. So, and then all excess allocations over the future go away, we are then reduced to even 1%. So when we look at sustainable growth, if sustainable growth is 2%, 1% is not sustainable. The economy suffers. The builders suffer. Everybody that works in this room suffers. And though it doesn't affect retired individuals and a most, a majority of our population, when I'm looking at the excess allocations, you guys created a 2% number, and I'm not saying you're going back on it today. I'm just saying you said you agreed with county staff, and like you like to point out our little offs, I'm doing so again today. The point of this is that we are changing something that works. You know, I do, I do agree with some of the changes we have made. I can't say that I don't agree with all of them. But what I'm thinking is that I'm, I'm hearing that we are now thinking that 2% is not the number. And I don't see anything in here and anything in this presentation that points to what is sustainable growth? What is that number? And if we reduce it from 2% to 1%, what have we actually done? We've reduced the amount of buildings. Yes, we've done what the retired individuals want, but the business community can't afford. The business community not affording it won't be here to support those retired individuals in the future.
Well, I have two quick comments. One is, the growth rate in the United States for decades, many decades, has been right around 1%. And the, the United States is not a failing economy, so it's not mandatory that, so 2% is twice the national growth rate. And you keep saying we want to remove, lower the number of allocations, and we don't. You know, we've been growing at under 1%, and now if we grow a little over, we've been growing at under 2%, and now by using excess allocations every year, a limited number, 10% of them each year, we will grow, have the potential to grow it over 2% for a number of years. I'm okay with that. We're trying to get to an average rate of 2%. We're also trying to make, part of the idea of the Sustainable Growth Initiative, as I mentioned, is to make the growth kind of like that. There will inevitably be peaks and valleys, but what we're trying to prevent is the growth going like that and then cratering, and then shooting back up, and then cratering again when the next crisis comes along. So I think that limiting the number of excess allocations to 10% per year for the next 10 years makes sense. It makes for a more predictable growth rate that potentially will be over 2% for the next decade, and I'm okay with that. And we're not trying to remove any excess allocations. You keep saying that, and I don't know what you're talking about.
I mean, it's in the language, but, you know, when we look at, you know, the homes that we have vested, you know, we have all these projects and everything like that. If we built every single one next year, what is our average rate over this time? 2% Jim. So you can't say that we need to achieve this average, and it's okay to go above it. If we're needing to achieve the average, why would we change that average? And removing, as the language states, excess allocations not used will not roll over, will never achieve 2% if we don't hit the allocations every single year. That's my only point.
Right, well...
2% is not 2% at that point.
To be honest, I do think that the language in that part of the suggested ordinance is confusing, and I appreciated the way you raised that earlier because I had noticed that as well, and I think that language needs to be clarified. So I would just add that. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Jim. Other quick questions for Jim? Mark.
So Jim, can you tell me where the 2% number actually came from? Was that from the court, or was that an agreement between the builders and the county staff?
Well, the 2% in the Growth Management Ordinance and the Building Permit Allocation System came from the Sustainable Growth Initiative. That was set on, at 2%. When the county and the developers were finally ready to sit down with us and try to come up with some kind of compromise solution, because we had essentially won at the Supreme Court, one of the things that was agreed to by this diverse group that included realtors, builders, et cetera, county staff, was that the starting rate would be 2%. The two things that we compromised on that, to be honest, I wasn't very happy about, and they are very significant issues. One is that the 2% would not be a simple 2%, but a compounded 2%. 2% when you look at the 276 that it started with theoretically in the year 2000, by the year 2056 or whatever it is, becomes 800 and something. We weren't happy about that. That was part of the compromise. The other thing I wasn't happy about was, at the time, because again, we had no idea the Great Recession was coming, was that unused allocations would roll over and might potentially, you know, become 2,000 of them. I wasn't in favor of that either, but again, that was part of the compromise. So, you know, we kind of got our way on the 2%, but we kind of caved in on the compounding of the rate and on the excess allocation. So, you know, like a lot of issues, like the infrastructure bill that finally passed the Senate today, there's a, you know, if you're trying to get legislation done, you have to compromise on certain aspects of it, and that's the way that worked.
Okay. So Jim, I just have one more question. Where did Resolution 2007-R-50... 2007 R-53 come from, where we, where they decided to remove the vested projects first, and then split the alloc- the remaining allocation 70/30? Do you have any history of that?
On, on both of those two aspects of it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the vested projects, as you know, were the ones that were approved prior to this ordinance being introduced. So those people, the owners of those properties, those developers, thought, and, and we agreed rightfully thought, that they shouldn't have to stand in line for something that was already approved. So I, I think that's the less controversial side of the, the issue. And those were designed to go away in 25 years. We thought they'd be gone long before that, but then there was this thing called the Great Recession. As far as the 70/30 split, as I recall, that was agreed to by our group, which included, again, the Building Industry Association, staff, county commissioners, developers, realtors, and SGC. Um, and, um, I must say, I thought that that was going to be included in the ordinance itself. Not that, you know, we sat down every Friday and, and talked about the, you know, and argued about some of the features that would go into the ordinance. We didn't write the ordinance. That was left to staff, and, and I was surprised, some, some of the details of it I had to be reminded of in the last couple of weeks when I read through it completely again, and there were some things that I didn't remember had happened that way. It was decided, for whatever reason, that, that that 70/30 split would not be included in the ordinance, but that would be done by resolution. And that was done by resolution in, um, the same year, 2007. The board voted to, uh, make that the, the split. But, um, part of it was done to protect individual homeowners so that they wouldn't be squeezed out by developers who all of a sudden came in and gobbled up all of the, uh, the permits. And, you know, I think it was done looking at the history of the county and, and, um, I have a couple of notes here on that issue, thinking somebody might ask. But one thing that is interesting, if you look at the, the chart on page 47 in your packet, if you look at the numbers, uh, in the first 10 years that the ordinance was in effect, when nobody, when, when not very many people were building, 24 of the, in the individual pool, 24% of the available permits were used. But in the project pool, only 13% of the available, 30% of their lower 30%, only 13% of those were used. Well, it was a hard time for developers, but for individuals as well. And if you look up through the end of last year, the last year for which we have complete da- data through 2020, you will see that, um, of the 70% that are in the individual pool, 29% have been used. But in the 30% in the, uh, project pool, even though, you know, you look around, you see projects going in all over the place, um, only 26% of those have been used. So still, a higher percentage of the 70% that's in the individual pool has been used in the last 14 years than the 30% that's in the project pool. So it makes it seem like that split was reasonable. But time will tell.
Thank you, Jim.
But it is interesting that, that a higher percentage of the individual ones have been used than, than the project ones to date.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mark. Bryce, any quick questions before we move on to the next presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to make it quick. One thing I've learned since being on the planning commission is that many of those before me wanted what was best for the county, as do we. There's a lot of forethought that has gone into a lot of the decisions that we find in the master plans and the code. And, and I think what was agreed upon in 2007, though it's debatable, is to, you know, who that might benefit, whether it benefits developers, whether it benefits anti-growth folks, or whether it benefits the county. I'm not necessarily going to get into that now. But there was a lot of thought that was put into place, and, uh, and, and, and part of it was, uh, to avoid having an anti-growth commission or a pro-growth commission coming in and willy-nilly at, at any whim, uh, making radical changes to that. And so I, I wonder, Mr. Slade, if, if we were sitting here with a pro-growth commission that wanted to increase the allocations from 100% to 110% or 20%, how you would feel about that? If, if, if we were talking about going the other way, instead of limiting allocations or reducing percentages, and, and you say we're not eliminating them, but in 10 years, we are, how, how would you respond to that if, if, if the script was flipped?
Well, for starters, I'm not anti-growth. And I don't believe that any commissioners are anti-growth. There are people like myself who believe in sustainable growth, who believe in slow, steady gr- growth, who believe it's not only in the interest of the quality of life in our county, but also in, you know, the, as was mentioned many times in the master plan, in consideration of our, the viability of our water resource and of our fiscal resources, um, that we grow at a controlled rate. And 2%, as I mentioned, is twice the national rate, and I think it's reasonable. You know, most people, most being probably more than 50% of the people, if not more, moved here because they like the rural character and quality of life here, and, and they don't want to see excessive growth. You know, I, I don't, didn't understand all the ramifications of some of the things that staff is proposing as I came in here. I'm still a little confused with the, some of the red line stuff. It is not my intent to eliminate any, uh, building permits over the course of the the time period that's before us, you know? A, a 2% rate over time, I think, is reasonable for our county. And, um, I'm okay if, you know, I don't, you know, additional allocations can be tacked on to the end, or they can be kept in the excess pool. I do think it makes a lot of sense, as I mentioned earlier, to limit them to 10% a year. And if that strings out a little bit longer, that's okay. Staff, as they mentioned, picked 10 years because that's when the, the vested projects go away, and all of a sudden, the number of permits double. Um, so they thought it would be best to try to get rid of those. And, and if we have 58 this year, and they use up the whole allocation every year, that's fine. You know, it's not, my point is not to try to limit the number of allocations over time. It's to stick to the 2% growth rate over time. And if a pro-growth board, which we've had, by the way, for the last 20 years, in my opinion, were to want to change it to 3% or add another couple of hundred permits every year, yeah, I would be hopping mad, and I would demand that it go as the ordinance says to the voters. But I don't think that's what's happening here. They're just trying to keep the rate of growth at a reasonable level along the way, and to try to prevent the boom-bust thing, and, and try to, um, because we know that a unpredictable growth rate is bad for our infrastructure, for our water, for our, you know, facilities, that it's hard to, you know, get things built in time, in place, um, you know, going forward. So, um, I still think that a 2% rate without changing the rate or changing the total number of allocations over the time period in the ordinance is a reasonable thing, and, uh, that's my point of view.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. I, I didn't suggest or say that, that you're anti-growth. I didn't suggest that any particular board is pro or, or anti-growth. I, I think I'm just trying to, to make a point that I think that the, the forethought that went into this 14 years ago, that there were reasons for it, and the reasons were to, to keep, uh, our particular leaders in check. And, and so I, I guess, I, I, just one final question. Do you believe over, over the last 14 years that the growth rate in, um, Douglas County has been controlled and sustainable?
Well, I, I, you know, I think it's unfortunate how little growth there has been. I, I believe in a 2% growth rate. I would have been fine with me if it was 2% every year. I feel sorry for, particularly the small builders here that depend on building their two or three houses a year. You know, I, I think there should be growth. I just think it should be reasonable and, and have an average over time. And I would say that this, um, the Sustainable Growth Initiative and the building permit allocation system were not to keep the commissioners in check. It was to force them to follow what was clearly written in the master plan, which they were ignoring. So it was to support the master plan, not to punish the commissioners, except for the fact that they were consistently ignoring it. So it, it was, uh, you're trying to make it a negative thing. It was a positive thing to, to follow the master plan that had so much public input, that followed the, you know, massive amounts of public outreach, and which tried to reflect the values of our community. And we were trying to support those values.
I was done, but I just want to clarify one more thing. I, I think that's probably the third time you've put words in my mouth. I, I'm not suggesting it's a negative or a positive. I'm suggesting there was a reason that it was done, and I just was curious as to your thoughts as to whether or not what was done was working over the last 14 years. I think you answered that question. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Very valuable presentation and contributions. Uh, we'll now move on to the next, uh, person to present information. And this is Aaron West from the Builders Alliance. Uh, I invited them to come because I believe they have a important role in the process and have an important perspective that should be shared. So, uh, Aaron, please go ahead with your presentation. And then we will try and limit questions again, uh, at the end of this, so we can come back to public comment and then do, uh, do some general questions to everybody on the, uh, on the, uh, group that has presented, including the staff. So go ahead. Do you need the lights dimmed for, uh, for everything, or Sam, have you got everything under control? Thank you.
Totally up to you guys. Uh, thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, for the record, Aaron West. I am the CEO of the Nevada Builders Alliance. Uh, we are the largest construction trade association in the state and proudly housed right here in Carson City, and, uh, you know, spent quite a bit of time here in Douglas County and Carson City and the rules. But in that capacity, I represent over 1,000 construction-related companies, and we're involved in efforts all over the state. And I actually, I want to commend, uh, Mr. Slade, you know, 30 years of advocacy on this issue is, is commendable. And I find myself going into a lot of jurisdictions and, you know, and trying to address the issue of housing, and typically, I'm up against, you know, a group of people that have maybe been in the community for five years and now want to shut the door. So I think it is commendable, uh, that Mr. Slade has, has been fighting the good fight for so long. So, um, obviously, Mr. Slade gave you, you know, a really long run-up into what kind of led us to the Sustainable Growth Initiative. I would probably, my focus is going to be on since then, right? I mean, obviously, in 2002, the Sustainable Growth Initiative passed, um, in Douglas County with a 53% of the vote. As Mr. Slade indicated, that was challenged, and it did go to the Supreme Court, where they issued a ruling, uh, on the legal challenge of SGI. And a, a question was asked about how they arrived at the 2%. And the, I wanted to put on the record that the Supreme Court, in their, um, brief noted that the 2% was actually a valid number at the time that, that the initiative was passed. Because it was based on a population of 35,000 people, and so a 2% growth of that 35,000 people would be 700. And at the time, there was a, a factor of 2.59 average number of people per household, which led to, the 280. So that's how we started at the 280. And then, uh, obviously, from there, it, uh, it worked through the process. The ordinance was created in, after, uh, much discussion. Uh, the ordinance was created in, in 2007. And I, I appreciate the questions being asked about, um, the subsequent resolution, because I think as we get into it, you'll see that that piece of it has actually kind of muddied the water a little bit. But at, at the end of the day, if we, if we're talking about the ordinance as it exists and as it was created in 2007, that ordinance then went to the voters, uh, as an advisory question in 2008, where it passed overwhelmingly with 64% of the vote in support of, of that. And that became the system that the industry has worked within. And we've been content working within that system. And I, I really appreciate, um, the conversation as it relates to, was the intent of this, you know, 2% per year with the idea that we would forego any hiccups or shortcomings? And I thi- I think if you look at the legislative record and the ordinance itself, it was made very clear. The fact that there was a table built within the ordinance that projects out 50 years and shows that 2% compounding growth, that was obviously the intent. And so our contention, just out of the gate, is that, um, to go back and look at eliminating that pool of allocated permits, which you guys have accurately summarized, is the intent of this. And I, I want to be, I want to be careful, because there were some comments directed at staff that staff brought this forward. You know, I was at the, or I was participating in the, in the county commission meeting. It was very obviously directed, that 10% number was very obviously directed to staff. So, um, this, I, I don't want to call out staff at all on this. So, you know, so we, we, we got to, we started out with a, an ordinance, and, and we got community support for it, and then we, and then we, we throw this resolution into it, and we got to, what now is a pretty confusing, uh, process. And, and I, I do appreciate some of the testimony, um, at the county commission meeting about, you know, isn't there a way to simplify this? Is it something that we can make, you know, easier to understand? Probably. You know, I mean, Carson City has, has a, a, a growth initiative, that's capped at 2%, and it is a very literal, single number. Every year, it's calcu- the 2% is calculated, and, uh, one number is set as the max number of residential permits that are going to be issued for the year. Is that an opportunity? Potentially. But because of the legislative history of this, I think it's, it's really short-sighted to try, especially on such an accelerated timeframe as we have in front of us today, to really contemplate any changes. You know, I, I, I don't want to take away from all the thoughtful work that went into creating this, and the fact that, as is pointed out, I think the SGI group has been content with what we've had for the last 14 years. The building industry's been content. And so is there room for improvement? Probably. But do we want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, um, and, and really undertake, you know, significant changes to something that is, that appears to be working rather well? So, um, you know, as you know, we've got the vested allocation. That then creates a, a factor that decreases the total allocation that's allowed for distribution. That distribution is then further split 70/30. And a question was asked about the 70/30 split, and based on some of the conversations that I've been able to have with folks at the time, it was re- it, it appears that it was really to protect, um, a lot of the local small builders, you know, so that they could be competitive with the larger, uh, you know, production home builders that were, that were looking at the area at the time. And so it, it really created an interesting skew. The caveat to that, I will say, is that I think the challenge for the community looking forward as it relates to that resolution and that 70/30 split is the bulk of the lots that are being created and, and are then pulling permits from that individual allocation have historically, and continue to be created by parcel map, and they're then being served with individual well and septics. So as a community, from a policy perspective, do we really want, you know, a system that, as set up right now, encourages, uh, wells and septics? And I think we all know that that's a bad thing. So where, where possible, I think the community has evolved, and we now have local professional builders who are not being allowed to draw from the individual pool. They're being, they're, they're having to draw from the project pool. And, and, you know, there's, there's challenges associated with that. But again, we're pretty content with where it's at. A lot's been said about, you know, what's going on within the, within the housing market, and the fact that, you know, we haven't, um, come close to. fact that, you know, we haven't come close to hitting the 2% on an annual basis since this was implemented. And there's a lot of factors. As Mr. Slade pointed out, there's a lot of factors that go into, you know, why haven't we been able to build? But the reality of the situation is Douglas County has now become one of the least affordable places to live in Nevada, not just northern Nevada, in Nevada as a whole. You know, with a median sole price of $570, when you have your median days on market at seven, you know, houses aren't even on the market long enough for a working couple to arrange to go view it before it's going into contract. And I think, from a market, you know, from an industry standpoint, what we've really noticed over the last, and especially, you know, coming out of the recession, is looking at how we built prior to the recession and what we're trying to accomplish now, and it was, you know, primarily, you know, single-family, you know, crank 'em out, away we go. And what we've really come to realize in the last few years is that we need, we need an assortment of product. We need, we need a lot of variation in our product types so that we can hit different markets, so that we can provide attainable housing. And that's where I want to be careful, I want to draw the distinction between affordable housing, which in, from the industry perspective, is, you know, true government subsidized, you know, government-provided housing, to attainable housing. And that's really, you know, really meant to try and serve the needs of your frontline folks in your community, right? Whether it's law enforcement, fire, teachers, nurses, things of that nature, those are the folks that we really need to target. And as we've tried to, as the industry has tried to shift in the last few years to be able to meet that demand, I will tell you, to say that development in Douglas County is rampant, I think we can demonstrate is, isn't true. But also, the process, you know, there was some talk about pro-development or not development. The reality of the situation is that the processes associated with creating entitled parcels now has become very cumbersome, and it's become very protracted. And so, we have, we literally were on the precipice of some projects coming to market that are going to be able to provide attainable housing within this community, but they've literally taken five or six years to get through that process and get to a point where we can start to bring those to market. So, the idea of, we're finally in a position where we can really bring some benefit to the community, and now we want to start messing with the growth initiative that everybody has been fairly content with for the last 14 years. So, a couple of things within the ordinance that I definitely wanted to speak to, and this was actually brought up previously, and so I don't think it really makes sense to jump into it, but the idea of, I think it is, obviously, it's a great idea for the county to review the census data, look at what that means, look at, you know, the trends within your community, and then, you know, make decisions based on that. But the idea, and staff has recommended striking that portion of the change, that would then trigger changes to the growth, you know, management ordinance. We agree with Mr. Slade that this was very intentionally put in there, that if there's any proposed modification to the total number of allocations or modification of the 2% growth rate, that that must be placed on the ballot. So, at this point, we can live within our means, we don't need to go back to the voters. So then, let's talk about, let's talk about the pools and kind of what that looks like. And the only, and again, I will clarify that this is accurately worded, "The Board has determined that if excess allocations in the individual pool and in the project pool were permitted to be issued in the same year, the issuance would permit a greater rate of growth than was originally anticipated." I think it was very well articulated earlier, and we support the idea that that's actually false. We have not, by their very nature, the excess pool of allocations is there because we didn't use what was available within any given year. So, but by using those, even if we were to build out, there is no way that we could exceed the stated intent of the master plan and the growth management ordinance of 2% per year. So, the result of kind of market dynamics and, you know, industry challenges and entitlement processes is, you know, we get to where we're at now, where just looking at the total allocations and the total used, you know, literally, we've used 34% of what was allocated. So, I guess that's our biggest defense for, we don't have rampant out-of-control growth, and further support that even if we did build out what was available, we still wouldn't have rampant out-of-control growth. We would literally just be meeting the intent of the ordinance. So, a couple of things, and I apologize if the print's a little small, so I'll read it. So, the intent of the growth management ordinance passed by the voters of Douglas County is to allow for 2% growth annually. That is a reasonable number that all sides agreed on at the time and has never been reached. Unfortunately, the current system is overly confusing and restrictive, leading to only 30% of the permit allocation since 2007 being utilized. This has created a pool of unused permits, which are vital to Douglas County's future stability. There is no need to justify, for justification, for changing the allocation of the pool system, and has worked so effectively. The Douglas County's population has averaged less than 0.5% population growth in the last 10 years. This ordinance is being rushed, there are real legal issues that need to be evaluated. Project entitlements were granted by Douglas County with reliance on the growth management objection, objectives. Existing financing for these projects are reliant upon the resources available at the time of the investment. There are damages incurred, or there will be damages incurred, to projects moving forward that were approved in recent years if this proposal was to move forward. A transparent public process is needed to vet these proposed changes. More voices and stakeholders are needed before any proposed change to this ordinance. So, a process should involve workshops and hearings long before any actionable votes are cast by elected officials. The Douglas County Board of County Commissioners has already commissioned a USGS water study. We, it's very clearly stated in the master plan that the goal, the stated goal of the growth management ordinance is to protect those available resources, right? And we feel that that's done that, but to answer some, you know, some questions were raised about availability of water, so the Board of County Commissioners have already commissioned a study with the USGS to evaluate the groundwater basin and potential impacts. We need that data. We can't just fly blind. We have a reason for why the 2% was established, to go and modify that 2% without having the necessary information to show, you know, why or how, then I think is premature. So also, there's an update to the transportation master plan that's underway, and something you might not know, but we certainly wanted to put on the record, is that the Business Council of Douglas County has also commissioned an independent review of the economic impacts of housing, or lack thereof. So any responsible public body would want to see those studies as well before we could understand the impacts of such a drastic change to the growth management ordinance. I think, based on some of the questions that were asked, I just wanted to chime in. I think we're not opposed to, if we feel that there's some modernization of the, of this ordinance that needs to move forward, you know, as stated by Mr. Booth, the banking and borrowing, right? It really turns out it's kind of a moot point, because you can address that within a development agreement. There's some cleanup language in there that is obviously, you know, not effectual. We're open to those conversations. The other thing that came up at the July 1 meeting with the county commissioners is just that overarching simplification of the process. You know, can we get to a point where if we say, you know, you're allowed to build 418 houses, you know, or residential units in this year, then let us build 418 and see what happens? And then, I thought it was pretty timely, just in, as it relates to the idea that we're somehow potentially creating a boom and bust cycle by having that excess pool out there, the idea that within the master plan, it actually says that the stated intent is to average out the peaks and valleys. So, if we, if we're short in one year, it allows that excess for the following year so that we can then average out those peaks and valleys. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Aaron. Very good presentation. I would like to allow some questions for Aaron individually, if you have them, very quickly. I would like to move it along. I think we can ask questions also of the group at large that may be directed to one person or the other, and then I've offered everyone a chance to follow on with rebuttals or clarifications, if that's necessary, because I think there may be questions that we ask of one particular individual, whether it's the staff or either the two presenters, that could be addressed by other people, or there might be contrary viewpoints. So, if there are specific questions for Mr. West now, you can go ahead with those. If not, I'd like to bring it to a point where we ask questions of the staff and the presenters all at one time, if that's, if that's all right with everybody. I know Maureen and Kristi, you haven't had a chance to ask any questions at all. Maureen, I can start with you, maybe for questions that you might have of any of the individuals. Jim, if you want to stand up and maybe share the podium microphone, and then staff can use their microphones where they're at, we can do it that way. So, please, address your question to anybody or everybody. We'll try and get through all of the questions that people have on the planning commission now, and then we will go to public comment. And I think if we can do that in the next half hour, 45 minutes, then we would take a 15-minute break after that, and then come back to the planning commission for deliberations and motions and votes. So, Maureen, would you like to go ahead with questions, and then we'll move to Kristi and go back to other individuals?
Jim, you mentioned early on about the 2% compounding, that you had issues with that, and looking at 20.560, .070 calculation of allocations. It says under B, C, and D, about allocations dwelling units are converted to allocations increased at a 2% compounded annual rate. And it says that several times, and then we have a table that goes out, Mr. West referred to this as well, going out 50 years with the compounding. And I'm sorry, but I don't recall exactly why you were objecting to the compounding?
Basically, because it, you know, 280 becomes 800 and whatever it is, 50 over that time. You know, the Sustainable Growth Initiative, which was passed by the voters, limited it to 280 each year. So a simple increase of 2%, not a compounded increase. So, given the way that, you know, I was, I believe Albert Einstein has said, "The greatest miracle of our time is compound interest." Compounding, even at 2%, you know, there's the rule of 72, you know, it doubles in 36 years, and then it just keeps going. It becomes, you know, 276, or 280 becomes 800 and, what's the number, Sam? 850 or something? You know, it's a big number. And we would have preferred that it not compound, because it would lead to that much more growth, but that was part of the compromise that we accepted. And if I, while I'm here, if I could just add one point on the excess allocations, even though I have said that I support what staff has recommended, and I would be okay with it, if you listen to the board meeting last month when this was discussed, it was my suggestion. I didn't care for the 10% idea. My suggestion was up to 50 out of that pool to make for a predictable rate of peaks and valleys, but peaks and valleys like that, not peaks and valleys like that. Up to 50 out of that pool in any, every given year until they were gone. So, if we were doing it the way I recommended, there would be no, none of those excess allocations would ever be thrown away. So that was what I suggested. I think there, I understand why they want to do it by 2031, when the pool jumps up by 47%. That has, makes a certain amount of sense to try to eliminate the excess pool by then. But there are other ways to do it that I would be open to, and I'm sure staff would consider as well. So I just wanted to make that point also.
Thank you. Mr. West, when you said, "Give us a number, 400 units a year, we'll build 400 units a year." From where I originally come from, we had a growth limit of 600 units. That included everything, 600 units a year. And that was 30 years ago that we set that limit. And I do not work well with percents. The 2% doesn't work for me. So if there was a number that worked for you and for your organization, what number would it be?
If we're talking about taking vested and the vested reduction and the individual and project allocations and just going with a straight number, the, well, I think, right now, Sam, you can correct me, but I think there's somewhere around a little over 23,000 residences in the county, and if we took 2% of that, we're somewhere around 500, you know? Maybe that's rounding up a little bit, but...
Okay. Because I'm looking at the table, and there, you know, the way it jumps up, and it just seems to me that the way it jumps up every year with the 2% compounding, it's not going to work. It's just too many units we're going to build out before we reach this, 26,000 units in 2050, or whatever it is. And there has to be, I agree with Mr. Slade, and we're going to run out of room. And I've come from too many places where we run out of room. I believe that this valley is very special, that the county is very special. There is a way to grow. I believe it's going to come, and we have to do it logically and sensibly and not destroy it. I don't believe in shutting the door, and I think we all want to protect what's here, because people are going to keep coming. And even if we don't, even if they don't come, we have interior growth that's going to happen. We all have families, and we have grandchildren, and we, you know, we'd kind of like to have them stick around, they go away and they come back, and that's what happens. But it's the compounding that gets to me, and I think to continually reference the years around 2000, when we had the slump and the depression, and use those, "Well, we never hit the 2%," that's unfair. It's unfair to the valley, it's unfair to your industry, it's unfair to the people who live here, it's unfair to staff who's trying to work out a way to make this work. So we need to come up with a better way to justify what will work. And contrary to others, I think that placing this back on the ballot in 2022 to remove the compounding is a way to go. I do think that's, it needs to be removed. I'll stick with the 2%, but I think that going back to remove that is something that has to go. I appreciate your frankness in giving me a number.
And to your point, I think the idea that we're taking a very accelerated view, you know, of a very complex issue, we could, you know, if we had the time to get the parties together and say, you know, there's obviously things that we do need to fix within the ordinance. The concern is, how far can we go before it triggers a ballot initiative? So if we just say, you know what, maybe it's in our best interest to clean up these things and put it back on the ballot, then let's have that conversation.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Kristi, did you have questions that you wanted to ask anyone at this point? Or should we go over, go back to questions that might come from us here?
I don't have any questions at this time. The one comment I would make is that the main difference between the 2007 crisis and what we're in now is that in 2007, we had a surplus in inventory. And the reason we have housing prices where people are paying 20, 50, 100 grand plus over is because we have a shortage. And at the rate we are going, our prices, unfortunately, I know four people who are leaving our community for other states because their houses that they rented got sold and they can't afford to buy here. So I'd just like us to consider that when we're thinking about it, that we do have a shortage overall across every community in the United States. a shortage overall across every community in the United States, and I'm sure the world. And limiting our growth and limiting our development is getting rid of the ability of our generations to stay in this community, and forcing them out.
Thank you very much, Kristi. I have a couple of questions that I can ask of each of the individuals at this point, and then we can move back to Brian, and Mark, and Bryce for other questions, too. Sam Booth, if I can talk to you just on a technical question first, about the individual allocations and the project allocations, and maybe if you could bring up the chart on page 47, which is the residential allocation tracking table. It is a little bit hard to follow, but I think the color coding you've done is very good, which shows us the 70% individual allocations, and that's in the somewhat darker green, and then the darker blue, which are the project allocations. So these were set, as Mark brought up, by resolution by the board in 2007. This was Resolution 2007-R-053. And I looked at that debate, Mark, it's amazing what you can find on the county website. They don't have transcribed minutes, but it's pretty brief, but there was really no debate whatsoever on the 70/30 split. I don't know if they had some internal discussions. Jim, you might want to amplify that on, about that at some point. But yes, it was primarily because the perspective was that, at the time, since we had a large number of vested projects that were out there, we thought, the wisdom was that we would take the total allocations, we would reduce it by the 47% to set that aside for vested. And then, since there weren't as many projects that had been approved in those years, the feeling was there weren't going to be many project pool houses, or project houses built. So they thought, better to give the 70/30 split at the time, to recognize that we didn't want to shut out any individual builders. So I think that was the basic concept. But Sam Booth, if I can get your perspective, what we did see in those early years is, yes, the individuals used much more than the projects. But we did have the vested numbers come in, and they are essentially projects that don't require an allocation. The allocations were reduced, but they don't require, as Jim said, the formal allocation. So my, I guess my question is, when you look at the chart, Sam, we really have never even come close to coming to what was allocated for the individual permits. Am I reading that correctly, in the dark green column, and then when you get over into the individual issued, which is the lighter green column?
Yes, that's correct, Chairman Walder. Yeah, and I think as I heard, as I heard part of the discussion, as Tom and I have reviewed this, and staff, as we look at the table, we've presented to the Planning Commission and the staff in the past, and the Board of Commissioners as well, that, you know, I think we've graphed those numbers. And you can see that the overall allocations between individual and project each year is less than, you know, the number that's given out. That's why we, that's why we are left with the growing pools that are there. And I think, yes, you're right, you look at the individual allocation, 70%, the column on the left, that's what's given out. The individual issued is much less than that. And then, just to keep track, we total the individual and project issued each year, and that's that far right column over there, kind of on the margin, because we're just keeping track. The same point can be made, just of the two columns together, that if you look at distributed allocations in the red, which is given out each year, and then what's actually been used, what's actually being used is much less than what's distributed in each year. And that's, again, that's why we have those growing pools.
Right. But just to follow up on that, with the project allocations, those go up very slowly. You see them starting in the 2007 at 50, and going up to 2021 to 66. So there's not much growth in those. But those, when you look at the number of issued in the light blue column further on down to the right, now, as we get into the 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021, the projects that are being issued are starting to exceed the project allocate, project allocations. So we've got a real counter to what's the current practice of the allocations that are being issued between individuals and projects. And I would call everybody's attention to the part of the procedures that says in Point 110, it's the top of page 33 in the packet, the second sentence. "If the board determines that too many allocations have been distributed to either pool, it may redistribute allocations by resolution." I looked back, and the last time the board considered this was, I believe, in 2017. And it was basically a perfunctory review. The staff did not recommend a change in the 70/30. Now, back in 2017, we weren't seeing the growth numbers in the projects, but now we are seeing the growth number. And I would just note that the board has that opportunity at any point to redistribute the allocation, so it's not a 70/30 split. And I think that's an important part of the ordinance that is in there. So going to my technical question, Sam, I think you've mentioned at times, I'm not sure if it was in this packet, or you've mentioned it to me individually, and I think Tom Delaire, you've also called our attention to this, that it's very hard for the staff when builders go to pull an allocation, for you to sometimes determine whether it is a project or an individual. There's no real means for you to tell, other than either asking the builder, or going to some detailed records, to determine whether they're building one project house or one individual house. So that presents confusion, and is a source of difficulty for the staff to keep the number, keep track of the numbers. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Walder. This is Sam Booth for the record. I would just clarify to say, it's very time-consuming for staff to do that. We do have the means, it's not difficult for us. We can pull with our permitting software system, they give us the APN of the property, we can pull the recorded map, you know, where that's located, we can determine whether it's a subdivision or a parcel map, and easily move forward from there. Of course, you know, and we have entered into the record our subdivision tracking sheet that we use for that as well, and if we need to, we dive back into those previous packets. But you, as you can imagine, just that process I described there, for our staff that's working the front counter, as they have, you know, a line waiting to submit plans and to get allocations, that's a process we have to go through each day. And it's time-consuming.
Complicated, time-consuming. Time is money. We want, we want as simple a process as possible. I think that was what the board expressed several times. That would always be my desire. I know Brian has said this numerous times, when you have 20 pages of an ordinance that you have to go through to figure out whether you can get a building allocation, that's kind of excessive for a county that should be low regulation and low government involvement. So I think one thing that needs to be explored is just eliminating the designation between projects and individuals, and just lump them into all allocations. A house is a house is a house is a house. So that would be a suggestion I think we need to weigh very carefully. Next, I'd like to move to a question that maybe Sam Taylor could address, and I hate to throw out the $64,000 question, but Brian has alluded to it, I think Mark has touched on it, Bryce has touched on it, and has concerns in this area. But when we get down to looking at possible changes in the ordinance, if we make changes that deal with the carryovers, and we limit them to 10% a year, over 10 years, with excesses being eliminated after every year, or at the end of 10 years, the question that I would have for the District Attorney's Office is, the original growth management ordinance said we would allow the building of 26,812 homes through the allocations. Now, if we have a process, or a modification of the ordinance that reduces that number by causing the excess in any one year after 10 years to be eliminated, does that not violate the section of the ordinance, which is Point 070, the calculation of allocations, that said, "The number of allocations is compounded annually at a 2% for the 50-year planning period, resulting in a total number of allocations of 26,812." Any modification in the total number of allocations, or a modification in the 2% growth rate, must be placed on the ballot by the county for an advisory vote prior to the implementation of any modification. So I would ask the District Attorney's Office if they could provide us with an opinion on the proposition that I've just explained?
Mr. Chair, this is Sam Taylor, on behalf of Douglas County DA's. I would say that your interpretation of that provision is relatively correct, and that you cannot eliminate allocations, which is why staff has proposed, I believe, the modification that they did, and presented to this commission today, in terms of eliminating the unused allocations at the end of the 10-year period. So that is why they propose that.
But doesn't the ordinance not have any reference to a 10-year period, and run through the entire 50-year period, which was planned by the original ordinance when adopted?
Sam Taylor, again, on behalf of Douglas County DA's, I would say simply this, that there is no limitation in terms of the board restricting the number of permits in any given year. In fact, I think previously you had cited to the fact that 110 specifically indicates that the board can, by resolution, change the allocations in any given year, existing allocations and between the pools. So I don't think that there's a limitation on the board, as long as they do not eliminate allocations. I think that the prohibition is on eliminating the allocations, not necessarily restricting allocations in any given year. So in other words, if you do 10% for 10 years until 2031, I don't think that's inconsistent with the statute. But if you did 10% for 10 years, and at the end of the 10-year period eliminated them, I think that that might run afoul of the statute.
Thank you. I have a couple of other ones that I would like to post, maybe starting with Jim Slade. Jim, you were at the board meeting, I'm not sure if you participated remotely, or were at the board meeting on the 1st of July, but I think you heard all of the comments that were made, and I think you made some comments at that meeting, when I reviewed the minutes of the meeting. But I'm not sure whether you were present in person, but I'm sure you weren't, but I'm sure you listened to every, everything that was said. So let me just repeat one thing that was said, and ask you, I think you said earlier that you supported the, obviously, two measures that you placed on the ballot, and you supported the, as a compromise, the ordinance that was passed in 2007. You weren't in favor of all portions of it, but you supported it.
As a compromise, yes. I believe that I wrote the ballot argument in favor of passage of that advisory question.
Great, okay. Good. What was said at the, at the board meeting on the 1st of July was, and this was a discussion that came at the end of their deliberation, so they, they heard your presentations, they heard the staff's presentations, they debated back and forth various alternatives, I think it was almost toward the exact end of the meeting. But it was said, "After what we've reviewed, the ordinance appears to me highly biased in favor of the developers, and I don't know how voters got conned into voting for it." Would you agree with that statement, that voters were conned into voting for it?
I don't believe that's an accurate representation. I think people understood it was described as a compromise. It was a compromise, that's the way things get done. I supported it somewhat reluctantly, but I supported it. At that point, pretty much everybody was tired of litigation, certainly we were. And it seemed like, you know, the only way forward was some form of compromise, and even though I didn't agree with certain aspects of it, I thought that it was the best route forward. So I would not subscribe to that idea.
Thank you. The next question talks about the method of distributing the allocations, and it's part of what I read before, but I'll go through it again. This is Section 110A. And it says, it says, and my question is concerning the language which I read before. "If the board determines that too many allocations have been distributed to either pool, it may redistribute allocations by resolution." And I'd like to ask you, if you were involved, and if you could speculate, was the intent that this would allow the board to reduce all XX allocations, both the project and the individual allocations to zero? It seems to me, by using the words "either pool" and "redistribute," I would assume that the goal of the board was to say, "Okay, if we have 100 XX project allocations, and only 10 excess individual allocations, next year, we're going to shift it." So we got 45 more projects, and the individual pool goes down by a certain amount. Was that kind of what the flavor of that part of the ordinance was?
I don't believe that that was discussed, to my, the best of my recollection, I don't believe that that was discussed by our working group back then, although perhaps I've forgotten that. I don't believe that the idea was to reduce them all to zero at any time, although certainly the board, in case of emergency, could do that. And if we started clearly running out of water, much more obvious than we are now, I mean, now we have some wells going dry on the edges of the Aquifer, and Johnson Lane, and Ruins Strauth, and those areas, but it has not reached crisis stage. If it reached a crisis stage, then the board would be able to consider that, and, because it would be in the county's best interest, you know? We don't want to just keep sticking straws in the ground till we're all living in dust. So that is a possibility, but I don't think that was what was contemplated by that. I don't remember any discussion about switching allocations back and forth between the individual pool and the project pool. And I would like to mention, I think others have mentioned this, when I talked about the individual pool, it is important to remember that that's not just individual homeowners coming down there and saying, "Hey, I'm going to be the general on my project here, and I'm going to build it myself." One of the reasons that that was important to us, that that allocation for them be protected, is that everyone, including the Sustainable Growth Committee, wants our local builders, who build two, or three, or four houses a year, to be protected. We support them. We want them to do well. We feel sorry for what they've gone through for the last 14 years. We want them to do well, and we want those allocations for them to be protected, so that what I would consider inappropriate growth, like the Park Ranch project, which was outside the urban service areas, outside the town batteries, now approved for 2,200 and something homes, so that they don't gobble up all the allocations and leave the local builders out in the dust. I mean, Park isn't going to develop those, he's going to sell them off to the highest bidder. So that was part of our concern. And when I look at, you know, you mentioned earlier that the project pool this year, I think, is 66. If we were to allow, as is proposed, 10%, 58 additional permits this year for the project pool, that would almost double it. So that's something to consider. Again, my suggestion, which would get around what Sam Taylor was talking about, is instead of a decreasing number over 10 years, or whatever, to do up to 50 permits per year that would keep rolling forward, but never more than 50 in one year. And so no allocations would be eliminated, the 2% rate over time would be achieved, yet we would have more predictable growth. We wouldn't have the wild swings either way. We would be able to prepare financially, and our natural resources, our water, our infrastructure, our sewer system, our water system, our JLEC, everything, we would be able to prepare, knowing that even though the rate will fluctuate a little, that it won't fluctuate a lot. So that was, I still think that something, whether it's 10% a year, or 50 additional permits... permits, up to 50 permits additional per year, to get rid of that, something like that is a good idea, because it does give us a predictable rate of growth. Thank you. Was there anything else that you did answer there?
No, but I'm going to touch on those two same subjects that you were just addressing, because I think those are important subjects. One of the things that I also wrote down from the Board of County Commissioners meeting on the first of July was your point that an allocation system will allow for predictable growth rates. And I think I got that right, looking at the exact minutes of the Board of County Commissioners. Does that seem?
That's something I said?
Yes.
Okay. That sounds like something I would say, yes.
I think it is. You've repeated that probably many times.
Many times.
But where I disagree with you is, we adopted this growth management ordinance in 2007, and as Brian very, very carefully and very cogently pointed out, we've had anything but predictable growth rates. The growth rate has been predictably low, I guess you could say, if we're shooting for 2%. We've had a half a percent, or three quarters of a percent, or a little over 1%. And in my view, and Bryce touched on this as well, is an allocation system of this nature, it artificially restricts growth. It doesn't do anything to sustain growth or build to a acceptable level that avoids some economic disruptions in the county. So I think if we were going to have a, and I like your term, I like the strategic growth initiative. I don't like growth management.
Sustainable growth initiative.
Sustainable. I always get that confused, I'm sorry. But yes, I like that. Rather than growth management, I don't think we should manage the growth in a downward level. I think sustainable growth is a very good concept, but 0% growth, to me, as Bryce and Brian talked about, really creates economic harm. I can go into some of the numbers a little bit later, but where we've seen the growth in jobs in Douglas County, and you look at some of the things that were in the master plan, and some of the things that were presented to the board a few months ago, we've had 300 or 400 growth, job growth in the past seven years, and it's all been people who live outside the county. So what does that tell me? That tells me that people want to work in Douglas County, but they can't afford to live in Douglas County. So they live in Carson, or they live in Sparks, or they live in Lyon County. And to me, if you have a growth ordinance that is overly restrictive, we're going to suffer over the long haul by not having a growth level that is strategic in economic development, as well as the resources that you often cite and that are cited in the growth management ordinance. So I guess that's where you and I disagree. I'm happy to allow you a couple of minute rebuttal, but I don't think we get predictable growth rates by having a cap on growth.
Well, let's be clear. I think, I would hope that everyone would agree with this. The only reason that growth has been so slow since 2007 is because of the Great Recession. It has nothing whatsoever to do with the building permit allocation system.
I don't agree with that at all. I think Christie may have made that point, or Bryce made that point. We've had economic boom times. We should have been having economic boom times in the last two years. Interest rates are low, people want to get into new homes. It just, it confounds me that we have not had the stronger growth that would help Douglas County.
But you're not suggesting it was the building permit allocation system that limited that? That didn't limit it at all?
It very well could limit it, is what I'm saying. It has not, because as Bryce pointed out in our February meeting, the recession and the factors that came into play early on built up the pool so much, so it has no impact. But if you would have looked at the exact growth numbers, if you wouldn't have carried over the excess pool, it would have limited it, and would limit it in the future, which I don't think is a good thing for the economic prosperity of the county. Now, again, you and I can disagree on that till the cows come home, but I think that's an important point to look at when we talk about growth management. We shouldn't just manage it on the upside and cap it and restrict it. We should do some management techniques on the sustainability of a certain amount of growth for the sake of our economic development in the county.
Right. But the drop off, the huge drop off by more than 75%, as I showed earlier, in building in this county after starting in 2008, was not due to the permit allocation system, it was due to factors entirely out of our control. It was due to mortgage lenders and subprime mortgages and bank problems and things that we had no control over. What the, my understanding of what the building permit allocation system is designed to do is to, over time, have a 2% growth rate. And what I think is good in what staff is suggesting, what I am suggesting, is that we don't, again, don't allow it to now grow without limit, because then there will be another exogenous factor that will cause it to crater. And people will move away, and housing prices will crater, perhaps. This could happen again. These are black swan events. We don't know when they're coming or what they're going to be. I mean, you know, houses in the ranches, we're selling for $350,000, $400,000 back in 2007, and three years later, you could get them for $150,000. And now they're even more than they were before. And the prices, I saw a piece on TV, a Realtor, I can't remember where they were from, on TV today, saying she was advising some of her clients, don't pay that much. That's overvalued. Don't bid 20% over the asking price. That's an unrealistic price. It will come back down. You know, I majored in economics in college, it's all about supply and demand. Part of the issue, as I think you guys know, is with the COVID pandemic, when people, as Ms. Candell mentioned, learned that they didn't have to go to the office every day, that they could act remotely, and that the pandemic was worse in the cities, a lot of people in the Bay Area in particular decided, oh, I'm going to move to Tahoe, and I'll just work remotely. And the prices in Tahoe went up, and then there's the spillover effect, and the prices in here went up, and, you know, maybe that's the wave of the future, or maybe people go, yeah, you know, we can't really work remotely all the time, maybe I will go back. Prices in San Francisco actually fell, because people were moving away, because they wanted to get away from the city. So it's not like prices have gone up everywhere. They've gone up a lot of places, and it's, they've gone up in places like here. I mean, I'm certainly not denying that. But, you know, they could go back down again. And, you know, the way to guarantee that they will go back down again is to have another unlimited boom cycle here, which will inevitably, at some future point, lead to a bust. And so, in my mind, it was unfortunate, the Great Recession that we went through, that didn't end in 2009, when the stock market started its comeback. It continued for many years after that for individuals and builders and whatever, but now we are coming out of it. And the idea is to get back to that long-range 2% rate, but over time. Not try to make up for 10, the last 10 years in the next four or five years. You know, we have to do it over time, so that we can have that predictable growth rate that allows us to, both fiscally and in regard to our infrastructure, our community facilities, and our water, to approach it over time, not to just rush back in and do it as fast as possible. So that's, you know, I think that long-range 2%, not giving, not throwing away any of the allocations is the way to move forward.
Thank you. I think I can agree with you on many of the points. And if I can just summarize, and I want to let Aaron have a chance at responding, too. But I think we could be in agreement, Jim, and I think, I'm not going to speak for Brian, but I think he can add on this as well. But as he was making the point earlier, if we've had 10 years of 1% or 1 and 1/2% growth, I think you would say then, and I would agree with you, even though I don't like limits at all, that if we could go to a 2 and 1/2% or 2.8% growth for three years, or five years, or seven years, then we would be averaging out at about 2%. And I think if we can get to that kind of a resolution, whether it's by percentage or by numbers or whatever, I think that would be something that I could probably live with. So again, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think what I hear you saying is, you think 2% is a good number, you think it can be an average, you think there's obviously, you don't want to see boom and bust cycles, so you don't want to see 5% one year and 0% the next year. And I would agree with you, that's not probably the most healthy way. We can't always predict that, because years are artificial a little bit. But that's where I'd like to wind up, with something that's good for the county, that you and other people don't think is going to allow the boom to come in and 1,000 houses to be built in one year.
No, I do agree with that. But I think that what I have suggested, and what staff is suggesting as well, if it worked out just right, where they used those 58 permits every year, or whatever it was, it would, by using excess permits, you're taking the rate above 2%. We get that. That's the way it's designed to work, to get us back on that 2% glide path. But it's not going to happen, you know, we don't want it to happen in one year, or two years, or three years. We want it to happen over time. It would happen over, you know, we've had 10 years of recession, followed by the pandemic. If we, for the next 10 years, go over it for 10 years, at 10% a year, that would get us right back directly onto the glide path. And so I think that's reasonable. I don't think that ends up being 2.8%. But it's over 2%, and I'm okay with that. And it'll get us back in 10 years, or 12 years, whatever, onto that glide path. And I think that's the healthy way to do it, to do it over time, not to just throw away all the regulations and all the limitations. The master plan says we need to control growth, to protect our natural resource and our fiscal ability to keep up with infrastructure. And so it is in the county's best interest and the taxpayers' best interest to have that get back to the 2% glide path over a number of years, rather than allow it to happen suddenly. So that's my point.
Thank you, Jim. I don't want to monopolize the discussion anymore, but Aaron, did you have comments that you wanted to make in response to some of the things that were raised?
Maybe just a little more nuanced approach to the idea that development shut down because of the Great Recession and so forth. But the idea that when this was adopted in 2007, there was this pool of 4,000 lots. And we hear a lot, you know, within the community, why are they approving more lots? There's, you know, thousands of lots out there that could be built on. And I think it's demonstrated in where we're at today, that out of the over 4,000 lots that were available in the vested pool at the time that this was created, about 1,000 have been used. The idea was that that was going to have this overwhelming impact. The reality of that situation is that the projects approved prior to 2007, a lot of the entitlements that are associated with those projects, unfortunately, are just untenable. And so you're not going to see those projects come to light, because there's just, you cannot make financial sense of it. And I'm the first one to note that we see this in a lot of places, where we get developers, especially from out of the area, they come in, they pick up a piece of property, they want to get it entitled as quickly as possible, so they can flip it. And in the process, they typically end up agreeing to too much, that the project just can't support. So I think in terms of cushions and whether or not we're going to see this huge swell, the idea that, you know, there's still 3,000 lots in that vested pool, that, it's not even a pool, right? The pool is part of the individual and project, but you guys know where we're talking. The reality is that that's probably not going to come to light. And then, coming out of the recession, the problem was that it takes so long to get these projects to market, right? And so, as I indicated, we literally have projects that are breaking ground right now that started five to six years ago. And so that's why there's been this lag. And so I just think, if we're looking at the spirit of the ordinance, everybody agrees to the 2%. You know, how we get there and what that allocation looks like, at the end of the day, we're, you know, we're okay working within the constraints that exist, because the other part of this, I can tell you, is representing the industry, and this isn't just a Douglas County issue, it's nationwide. We do not have the labor, materials, and everything that we need in order to try and even contemplate 1,000 houses, right, in an area like this. We're pretty much, the guys who are building are pretty much building as fast as they can. You know, why wouldn't you try to take advantage of the market that we're in right now? So do I think there's an opportunity with a couple of the projects that we talked about coming online in the next year for a little bit of a bump? But at the end of the day, there's just so many limitations within the system that I think it's probably over-exaggerated.
Thank you. Very good points. I apologize to my colleagues for taking so much time. I would want to go to any of them, if they want to ask questions now. If they would prefer, we can do public comment now, and still take a break around 4 o'clock, depending on how many people we have for public comment. Mark, did you want to ask a question or two?
I just want to ask one question, and I think it's best directed at Sam Booth. So if you can pull up packet page 47 on the screen. If we look at 2020, we see that there are 194 vested units. Then we go to the far right, and we see that we used 104 of those. Where did the other 90 go? Do they disappear? Do they go back into some other pool? Or, because I don't see where we're accounting for those on this chart.
Excuse me, sorry, Commissioner Ned and Rip. I was pulling that page up for you. Which ones are you referring to?
Let's look at 2000.
Okay.
And we have 194 units that are coming from the vested pool, bringing our distributed allocations down to 216. Now, let's go all the way over to the far right, and it shows that we used 104 of the vested units. We started with 194, we used 104, so where do the 90 go?
Yes, thank you for the question. Member Ned and Rip, this is Sam Booth for the record. So it is a bit confusing. We had a short discussion about this at the commissioners' meeting on July 1, and Deputy DA Cynthia Gregory, I think, gave some clarification to this. So the ordinance, as it describes the 47% reduction of the original allocation number, it's just a math calculation to try to take into account the 4,767 vested units that were approved back in 2007, when the ordinance was approved. And my guess is, the board at the time thought that it would take 25 years for those to build out, and they did the math, they thought that 47% of a reduction was appropriate. That number is shown in that column there, but it's not actual to anything, to what either can be used by a vested development in a year, or what actually is used. It's just showing the number, after you reduce the total number by 47%, what that number is. You know, in my opinion, we could remove that from the chart, it wouldn't have any effect on anything. Her point, I think, was that because vested projects are not subject to the growth management system, they could come in and build 1,000 units in any year. We know there's, at least at the time, there were 4,700. I think it is closer to 3,000 that are still out there today. All 3,000 of those can come forward at any time. They're not subject to this system. But just the math calculation that was used in the ordinance was to reduce it by 47%. So your question of where did they go, they're still remaining out there.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the Planning Commission before we move to a public comment? Bryce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would it be possible to recess prior to public comment?
If we would like to, we can do that. I was just trying to afford the people who are here for public comment the opportunity without having to wait a long period of time. But sure, go ahead with questions, and we can take as long as we need.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just think, and I think public comment's probably going to last more than 10 minutes, potentially. And if we could just take a quick recess, I'll leave that to you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Why don't we take a 15-minute recess, and we'll reconvene? Sure. Why don't we take a 15-minute recess, and we'll reconvene at 5 minutes after 4, and then we can either resume questions from the Planning Commission, or we can go to a public comment at that point. So we'll recess until 4:05. I'll call the meeting back to order, and we do have five Planning Commissioners here in person. Kristy, if you're back on the Zoom call, if you could acknowledge that, please.
Yep, I'm here.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your patience. If I can recap where we're at, If I can recap where we're at, we were asking questions of staff and the individuals who made presentations about the growth management ordinance. We do have to take public comment. I don't want to cut off members of the Planning Commission from asking questions. We can do that either now or we can do that after public comment, whatever the preference of my colleagues is. Would you like to ask questions now while we were going over the specifics that they all raised in the presentations?
Personally, I'd like to hear public comments, see if they raised any issues that caused any other questions, then we don't have to do it twice.
Very good idea, Brian. Let's go to a public comment.
Real quick, I did have two comments based on the discussion that just happened.
Yes, Kristi, I didn't want to exclude you. So go ahead, Kristi, and then we'll move to public comment.
Yep, I just wanted to touch quickly on, there was a comment made that a Realtor had said that they were recommending, don't pay that price because the prices will come down. And just to reiterate, the reason the 2007 crash happened is there was a housing surplus. And we also had the subprime mortgages to where historically, we have about 8% of those type of mortgages that are very high-risk loans. From 2004 to 2006, it was 20%. So that crash and that crisis is completely different than the scenario we're in now where we actually have a housing shortage. So to that extent, when we were talking about the growth cap and how we can say, oh, well, we've never hit our limit, so our limit must not be impeding development. I would also beg to differ on that. Just like when we look at unemployment, unemployment does not take into consideration the people who just gave up looking for a job. So the unemployment in general, not this year, not, you know, any specific year, but people with jobs are employed. People who are jobless but are actively looking for a job are classified as unemployed. And people who are neither employed nor unemployed are considered not in the labor force. So to that extent, just like the people in our community who don't attend these meetings, just because they're not attending, they gave up. They feel there's no reason to participate. So when we look at the growth cap and we say the 2% isn't impacting people coming in. I know from personal experience, there are developers and contractors who look at Douglas County, evaluate the code, see the growth cap, see the high risk of potentially putting in 50 to 300-plus thousand dollars in pre-development soft costs and say, it is way too risky to invest that much money into this market with the restrictions that are here, and they leave and go somewhere else. So simply saying we don't hit our cap in allocated permits is not a clear and true example that we're not actually stunting our own growth of our local economy. So I'd just like to throw those two out there.
Thank you, Kristi. Very good points. If there's nothing else from the Planning Commission now, I think Brian made a good suggestion. If we can go to a public comment and then we'll be able to digest the public comments and ask questions and frame our further action. So again, please sign in on the sign-in sheet, state your name. Brian will be timing people at three minutes with the timer. And as usual, the light will go on for a yellow and red when you have 30 seconds and when your time has expired. So we'll start public comment. Please go ahead, sir.
Okay, three minutes. This is gonna go fast. My name is Dar Holdeman. My wife and I, Tammy, my wife and I. We own and operate DTH properties here in the Valley. We build homes. We also invest in real estate. Let's see, my family relocated here in 1974 and I've basically called this place home. I have had times where I've left and come back, but overall, we've lived here off and on since 1974. I've raised six children here. All of them worked for me at times in our construction business. We build homes. Recently, I pulled a permit. And the cost was a little over $9,000 to pull a permit for a 2,700-square-foot home roughly here. $3,000 building permit fee, building review fee, plan check, $2,000. School tax, $1,584. Roads tax, $500. Parks tax, $1,000. Another residential school tax, minimal. Other fees, adds up. When I build a home, I figure about $200,000 in materials. Most of them purchased here in Douglas County, but not all of them, but a good portion of them. Brings in a pretty sizable amount of money. It's a good cash influx. I hear all the time that we're not pulling our weight here as builders or developers in the county. Actually, we're bringing quite a bit in. We're giving you a good cash infusion here. And that doesn't include putting people to work. That's probably the biggest and most important part of what we do here. To say that to take away the highs and lows of building is not going to have an adverse effect is very false and incorrect. What I see here is an attempt to limit growth beyond the sustainable initiative. Builders rely on highs and lows. We don't rely on the lows, but we rely on the highs. That's how we float through the lows. If we take those highs away, the booms, then we don't survive the busts. That's just how the building game goes. And I've seen it time and time again. Understand that building allocations will eventually sunset, it seems like, according to this new plan. There are no predictable growth rates. We're in a high right now, and that's good.
Sir, your three minutes have expired. You can leave the additional comments if you have anything in writing. And we will include those in supplemental materials.
All right.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Dave Brady for the record. As Mr. Slade mentioned, I too was in the room. As Commissioner, I chaired that committee, and it was a long year. I think that if I had a do-over, I would merely look to Carson City and pull their growth management ordinance. One page, seven sentences. But we can't do that. So here we are. The modifications or suggestions that I would like to look to are in line with what we're hearing today. But I think there should be a nexus between our population growth and the actual growth rate itself. The 10-year census, I believe, is like 1.3%. So bump it up to one and a half percent. There just needs to be that kind of alignment, in my opinion. Secondly, you have to preserve the unused allocations. Otherwise, you're going to find yourself in litigation quick, fast, and in a hurry. And the third thing is, I do approve or appreciate the use or lose it mentality. That is being exercised in Carson City. I think, to your point, Ms. Casey, the 2% compounding, there's 26,812 reasons why I don't like compounding. And like was mentioned here earlier throughout this meeting, is that this whole exercise with the growth management ordinance was truly about compromise. This is one of those areas where I thought, the compounding is going to kill us. And 26,812 allocations at the end of the day is kind of over the top. Finally, I'd like to suggest that you recognize why we're here. The current county commission wants something done. And to ignore their interest in this issue, I think it would be not appropriate. I think that I've worked with some of the new commissioners to talk about the growth management ordinance because none of them had ever read the ordinance or seen the ordinance. It had never been reviewed. So my concern was, given the makeup of this board, in anticipation of no review, they would go to the moratorium. And this is why we're here today. And I think we had a great discussion July 1st with the commission on this very issue. And it was quite engaging, and I think it was a very good learning experience for them and for the public as well. So those are my suggestions. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Cabrera. I'm a lawyer with the law firm Lewis Roca. You all received a letter from our firm this morning. I apologize that that was not provided more timely. It could not be avoided in this situation. As the letter indicates, our firm represents JV Valley Knowles LLC and JV, sorry, JC Valley Knowles LLC and JC Valley Knowles II LLC, which are owners of property that have investments that total over $33 million to date in expenses, in investments, that they've put forward so far without having received their final maps or their allocations under the system yet. You know, our concern is that if this were to pass as proposed, we are looking at a loss of that investment because they've been mapped for tentative maps, they've received their entitlements, but haven't been able to pull their final maps yet. They have two years to do that and can get a two-year extension, so they've got four years. But if the rolling allocation is taken off, then it would be impossible for them to pull those final maps in time under Nevada law, and they would lose that allocation. So essentially, although I understand you're a planning commission and you're considering a zoning ordinance, but ultimately, this is something that could open up the county to a lot of litigation, and it could be very expensive. And it could result in tens of millions of dollars in liability. And I mean, who knows what the outcome is going to be, but it probably will land in the court's lap. So ultimately, I think that the way that you all should at least consider this is to think about, how does this scheme comport with NRS? And the fact of the matter is, it won't. It would restrict all sort of growth to what's permitted year by year. And they could never do bigger developments like the ones that are currently existing. So one, you know, if it must go forward, I mean, we think that ultimately, the recommendation from the Planning Commission should be that the board deny this. But if it must go forward, we would recommend that there at least be in the alternative some sort of grandfathering provision that would allow everyone who's been entitled so far to continue to move forward with the process. That's consistent with what other jurisdictions in Nevada have done. And, you know, we would think that that would be something that you should consider. You know, the other thing that I just wanted to point out quickly while I've got a few more seconds is just that all of the growth that is happening to date is extensively vetted by your staff, by this commission, all the entitlements, all the tentative maps. It's not just willy-nilly being approved. It's being considered, you know, at every step of the way. It's not just expansive growth that's unchecked. So I hope that you'll consider that, and I'm sure you're going to hear from everybody else the same thing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commission. My name is Kenneth Hendricks. I am, and my and my wife are third and fourth generation Native Nevadans, and we actually own a production housing building company. I've been building in Douglas County since about 2012. As many people have said, I was one of those people who built during the crash, built out some of the ranch at Gardinerville, and subsequently found other sources, other ways to build properties in the county. And so I purchased the Valley Knowles property called, under the name JC Valley Knowles. We have 174 single-family houses, along with 96 multifamily. They are approved tentatives. And I have final maps ready to record on 61 single-family and 96 multifamily lots. I am also the purchaser of the Big George property. We spent nearly five years getting that property entitled. Not to mention that we spent, we are working on our sixth year of getting the Valley Knowles project off the ground. In the Valley, in the Big George property, we have 179 single-family lots and 174 multifamily lots on our approved tenancy map. And all these projects are in North Douglas County. I am currently working on a 55-lot final map where subdivision improvement plot drawings are in the county and the map is being circulated. We have $33 million in the ground right now to include 23.4 million in land purchases and over 9.7 million in infrastructure costs alone in the ground today. I relied on this ordinance, the way it is currently being administered, to ensure that I would have permits to build these projects. I wanted to just address real quickly, having built all the way through the recession, when the recession hit, everything stopped. If you had an entitlement on a piece of property, it went away. If you were entitling a piece of property, you stopped because there was no reason to move forward, could not move forward. And it was only until about 2016, 2015, that it was logical for us to move forward with projects. And it took us six years to get to this point, six years. And we didn't delay. It was go as fast as we could possibly go, and that's where we stand. And now I sit in at the threshold of actually able to build houses. And now they're going to take what I assumed being able to build at about 100 units a year in North Douglas County, where the progress is supposed to be, where building is supposed to be happening. It's just very frustrating. I'm sorry it took up all the time, but I thank you, Commission. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Brandon Hill for the record, 12-year resident here in Douglas County, together with my wife, a Douglas County school district teacher. We are raising five children. Also, local home builder, Carter Hill Homes, partner in Carter Hill Homes. There are a number of points where I think all sides on this issue find agreement. And I'm hearing 2% feels right as a long-term growth rate for Douglas County. 2% of the existing households that has been established today is about 500 permits per year. The effect of this ordinance as proposed, which we strongly oppose, would allow 127 new project permits next year. That is less than half a percent, not 2%, less than half of 1% of what is allowed or what the intent is of SGI with 2%. The other thing I think we've heard general agreement on is the ordinance, as staff has been directed to write it, is confusing. I think both sides today have heard comments and agreement that the way it's been drafted is confusing. There needs more time. It took years, as Mr. Slade pointed out, for SGI to be drafted as it was for the consensus, for the compromises to be made, for that to be achieved. Okay? The other thing I think, you know, we could see lots of agreement on is that we have a housing crisis. You know, Douglas County, we often hear complaints about, you know, traffic, increasing traffic on Highway 395. That's not going to get better if we continue to tell everyone who provides services in Douglas County works in Douglas County. You have to live in Carson City. You have to live in Lyon County. To Ken's point, hundreds of millions of dollars in investment have been made and are being made currently in Douglas County by builders and developers and capital partners. Those investments have and are being made and are entirely reliant upon the allocation, the banks, and everything that exists, the framework of SGI and the way growth permits are allocated. If you take that rug out from underneath us, there will be consequences for Douglas County. As a resident of Douglas County, I don't want to see that happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Justin Townsend for the record. I'm a Douglas County resident. I'm also an attorney with the Allison McKenzie Law Firm in Carson City. Our firm represents a number of developers and builders, including Carter Hill Homes. And I'm here specifically at the invitation of Carter and I'm here specifically at the invitation of Carter Hill Homes. Our clients, as a, as a whole, have invested millions of dollars in, in this community. They have projects at varying stages in the planning process. All of the money invested, as has been stated by many others, it was invested relying on the entitlement process as it, as it stands today. The proposed amendment to, to the ordinance, if enacted, will almost certainly result in, in litigation by, by a number of parties, including several of our clients. They simply cannot absorb the losses that would result from, from inability to move forward with their projects, where they've already invested so much time and money and effort in the entitlement process. Of course, we don't know how that litigation would go, but at the very least, I think the county would need to expect to have to spend significant amounts of time, and all, all sides would spend lots and lots of money fighting about whether this ordinance is, is valid or not. I really want to underscore that this, this is being rushed through. The, the ordinance is confusing, the amendments are confusing. If changes are, are needed, and I'm not sure that, that they are, it appears to my mind that the, that the, the growth ordinance is working, we are not exceeding two percent growth, and the ordinance would, would prevent that. But if, if changes are needed to, to modernize or make things more clear, a more thoughtful and inclusive process where all stakeholders are involved, over time, to develop something that makes sense and works for everybody would be what is needed. Work this out in the community. If we work it out among the community, we can avoid having to, to settle this in the courts, which I don't think anybody wants. Our, our clients, including Carter Hill Homes, are responsible members of this community. As Brandon noted, he, some of them are quite literally residents of this community. They, they employ folks in this community, they, they spend their money in this community. They follow the, the existing ordinance as it is written in all, in all the laws faithfully and in good faith for the benefit of this community. And, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there additional public comments?
Hello, good afternoon. Thank you to the Chair and to the Planning Commission. My name is Natalie Yanish. I am the Government Affairs Manager for the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe. We're a four-hundred-member organization, and we have quite a few of our members who work and live here in the Carson Valley and have vested interests as stakeholders in this process. So appreciate you hearing us out this afternoon. A couple of points that I wanted to make was that this is not just simplifying the growth management ordinance, and it's not clarifying language. This is major policy change that affects quite a few people who are private property owners, residents, and our community, as well as people who operate businesses within our community. You know, this was brought up at the last Douglas County Commissioners' meeting, and now it's being brought forth to you, but there hasn't been an offering for stakeholder input. So I would like to echo some of the other comments from some of the people who are attending this afternoon. Obviously, we have some private industry who are here, they've made some very good points. You know, there are people who have different opinions, and in the past, it was nice to have the background of how this ordinance had been created in the first place, and obviously, that was a long stakeholder process that took quite a bit of time and investment by community members. At this time, if you are going to be changing your growth management ordinance and/or allocations, you're really tinkering with the market, which has a lot of effects on construction and business and our real estate market and our community. I will give you an example of, you know, the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. I, you know, this is apples and oranges, but I deal with them quite often. They have a very restrictive allocation ordinance, and it has had unintended consequences over the years. And so they are now in the process of trying to backtrack and provide some incentives for growth, and also relax the rules after many years of realizing that the policies that they put in place for these restrictions on allocations reduced housing and has had unintended consequences on the way that the lake has been developed and redeveloped. So just as an example, I would say that anytime you're tinkering with development rights, it's a very complicated issue, and as a organization that represents many of the contractors in the area, we would be happy to provide input. I would hope that if you are going to make a recommendation and change this ordinance, that it would go through a more policymaking process with stakeholder group input, you know, before that would go towards, to the Planning Commission. But at this time, we would ask that you not move forward with the suggested changes to the ordinance. Thank you very much, have a lovely afternoon.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
While Commissioners, I do not envy your position.
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Christian Funk. Concerned citizen. One of these days, I hope to be in your position because I want to help direct. I appreciate everybody's comments, I appreciate the collaboration that's happened. I'd like to point out a couple different points that maybe is a little bit different perspective. Perspective is an interesting thing. Perspective always provides us a way of looking at something in a different way. I'm a transplant from the great state of Washington, born and raised in the state of Fair, excuse me, in the state of Alaska, Fairbanks. My very first home that I ever, that I ever had opportunity to get into, I, I contacted the contractor in the state of Washington and said, "I want to build a home." He said, "Okay, it's going to take two years." I said, "You've got to be kidding me." Long story short, nine months it took to get a permit allocation appointment in King County. Nine months from the time I said, "I'd like to get a permit," I'd go in in nine months, submit the permits, or submit the billing, and three months later, I'd get a permit, and then you go to the billing process. The billing itself, it only takes six months. I'm concerned as a citizen that we're headed that direction. I am in the process of raising seven children. The whole reason why I moved to this valley in nineteen ninety-seven was I could, I could move here, it was affordable, the first house I ever bought was a hundred and eighty-five-thousand dollars. I wanted my children to be able to live in a community that I grew up in, or that they grew up in. My son just bought a house in Carson City because he couldn't afford it here in Douglas County. Anytime you have a community that is not diversified, and what I mean by diversified is we need to have what I call the experienced among us. I would classify those in the sixties-plus. We need to have what I would classify as the working class, those that are in their forties, thirties. We need to have the younger generation that are just graduating high school, working in various industries to be able to provide for their families. Anytime that we only listen to one voice of those demographics, we're not going to have a community that's going to be viable for long term. If our community becomes aged, that could be a challenge. If our community is just a bunch of college kids, there's challenges that are, that provide there. So I just wanted to ask the Commission, so number one, echo what's been said here, we need to think really hard about what we're changing here and what we're doing to affect the, the community. I think any restrictions that go beyond what we already have will continue to have, housing will continue to cause a housing shortage, which will continue to drive up the prices, which will continue to make it so the only people can live here are millionaires. I couldn't afford to live here if I bought today. Thank you, Commissioners, good luck with your decisions.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, then I'll close public comment, and we'll come back to the Board of the Planning Commission. Let me summarize where we're at now, and then we can proceed as, as everyone would wish. If you look back on your packet on page nineteen, which is the request and the issue that we have for, for possible action is the ordinance, and it is a zoning text amendment, and I would like to advise the members of the Planning Commission that we have the authority to make recommendations on the zoning text amendments, and I've been advised, and we can ask for clarification if we need to, that the Board of County Commissioners would not be able to proceed without action by the Planning Commission. So it seems to me we have a basic, basically four alternatives. We can recommend approval of the proposed ordinance, we can recommend approval of the proposed ordinance with changes, we can recommend denial of the recommended ordinance, or we can move to have a continuance and bring this back at a later date. Now, I, I think the, the Board has stressed that there is some urgency. I always like to, to do the best we can to accommodate them. I think we've got a lot of good ideas that have been proposed by staff. If you look on packet page twenty, where they summarize, I think there's five of them there. I think all but one of them, the, the fourth one down, could probably be adopted without much difficulty. I think where we're at with the, the item, the one-ten, C-four, is, it is a very convoluted and confusing process. Brian has made some, some very good points about how we determine the ten percent. We've discussed the, the elimination of excess allocations after a year or after a period of years. That becomes problematic in either how that is done, or, we also heard many good comments in public comment about the, the situation we would find ourselves in if we do have limitations from the, the excess allocations, as far as how much that would limit the project homes. I've, I've thrown out the idea of, of addressing the seventy-thirty split and making some modifications in that so that that allows some more flexibility. So I think I would open it up for comments on how we should proceed. We can certainly proceed with a discussion of the, of the ordinance, page by page or section by section, and see which ones we like and which ones we don't like, or which ones need to be modification, modified. But at the, at the end of the process, we'll need to, to really come to one of the four decisions on, on how we move forward, and that's obviously up to the members of the Planning Commission. So we can start with question, other questions that members have of staff if they need to clarify things, or we can discuss what our options are of the ones that I mentioned. Bryce, your hand's up first, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. Slade said it best at the podium earlier that compromise is the way things get done, and he went on to state that, back in two thousand and seven, that they were tired of litigation. And as a planning commissioner, and, and listening to Mr. Taylor's comments earlier, I think that's exactly where we're headed if we move, move forward with at least one of these recommendations. With respect to the other ones, although I don't disagree with them on their surface, I, I think the challenge that I have is that the stakeholders, all of the stakeholders, haven't been able to chime in on these changes, and I think if given the opportunity, we, we probably reach a compromise that some of these or all of these changes that have been suggested, and maybe even more, would be good policy changes. And so I guess I struggle with, with moving forward with anything to the, to the Board of County Commissioners because I think this process has been rushed. I think we've, we've, that's come to, even in the last few days of just reviewing the information that's been provided to us as a commission, it was confusing, and, and just sitting here today and listening, just the amount of changes that have been made overnight and, and the discussions today, there's still a, a whole bunch of, of questions and potentially unintended consequences that may come from even what may be the simplest of, of policy changes, because not everybody's had a chance to weigh in. So, you know, for me, I, I have a hard time moving forward with a motion for anything, any changes to the Board of County Commissioners based on that.
Thank you, Bryce. Mark?
So again, Sam Taylor started by telling us that we could not reduce the number of twenty-six thousand and change. We heard from Jim Slade, who said this took years and years of compromise. I don't think we'll ever achieve a two percent growth rate, given the allocations are seventy percent individual, thirty percent project. I was very encouraged to learn today that the county commissioners have the ability to go in there and reallocate those allocations, and hopefully, they take a look at it. I do want to thank the county commissioners for bringing this up, though. I think it's on everybody's mind, everybody wants to talk about this. However, I don't think that we can rush this through. I think what we need is the stakeholders to come together, and, you know, hopefully, Jim Slade's still up for another round, but I, I'm siding with Bryce. I don't think I can recommend approval of this motion.
Thank you, Mark. Brian?
So, I mean, to start back at package page nineteen, Sam, you know, I see on page two-A, a staff response referring back to our policies and goals that we created in this master plan that we just, you know, created, or got approved, whatever people want to say, changed, amended, whatever. So continue to implement the building permit allocation and growth management ordinance. Continue. We said as a board to continue the growth ordinance. We, as the board in charge of zoning, did not recommend changes to the growth ordinance. We debated over this section, I can't tell you how long. We had every opportunity to change that sentence, no one brought up that point. We wanted to continue the growth management ordinance because based off what we were seeing, it was working. So my question, just for you guys, why are we here in the first place? Who brought up the changes when the Planning Commission itself asked to continue the current growth management?
Tom Delaire, Community Development Director, for the record. Thank you, Member Olent. The Board has asked us to bring this forward. We were directed by the County Manager's Office to, to prepare a, a presentation to the Board, and they, they wanted us to bring an ordinance and have a conversation about the growth management ordinance to the Board, and discuss really what they, what they envisioned in their minds, what, what is an issue within our community, and, and the direction came from them. It was very specific. We addressed their concerns the best we could with, with, with what was presented, and with later conversations that we've had with, with also the County Manager's Office and, and with our council. You know, the, we have proposed some revisions to the, the language that was presented in, in the packet, and, and that's how we got here today.
So a lot of what I heard started with board, them, they. I mean, everything I'm hearing is this is happening behind closed doors in a county because commissioners have asked that it happen so. We have people here, stakeholders, who haven't even been asked of their opinion through commissioners who intend to write a resolution to subvert all stakeholders. I mean, we read that one section of, what is it, twenty-five-sixty-oh-seven-oh, as result, the number of allocations compounded annually. My only comment on that is, you know, everybody loves when interest and dividends compound annually, but it's not okay for real estate, because real estate is something we view negatively, whereas everything else puts money in our pocket. So why did the contractors get treated differently than we even treat ourselves? I mean, I can't, I can't agree with that at all. But the base number of allocations calculated under item B in five-sixty-oh-seven-oh, you know, has the growth rate. The changes is basically a modif, it resulted in a total number under C of twenty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-twelve. Any, and maybe Sam Taylor can divide, define what any change means. Any, and maybe Sam Taylor can define what any change means. Any modification of the number of allocations must go to a vote. The stakeholders are the people, not the three commissioners in charge. 64% of the people voted for this. I believe 64% of the population, given the chance to affirm that they agree with the commissioners. Mr. Slade pointed out that in our voting, last time, 10% of the people voted for an issue. 10% of the voting population voted for that issue. Now, I can't relate that to how many people voted for commissioners. Did not provide that statistics. I don't know that statistic. But I can guarantee you that a majority of the stakeholders of the county weren't the voting people that voted for these commissioners. So when we're looking at a change here, where does any get defined? Is any only an increase? Because any, to me, doesn't say increase. It says any change. Up, down, left, right, whatever you want to say. So how do we define any? And I'd like to leave that to Sam Taylor.
Sam Taylor, on behalf of Douglas County DAs. When you're talking about any change, I think it's only logical to conclude that it would be a downward adjustment. I think the 2% is, any increase above the number specified would be basically beyond the 2%, and I think that would be impermissible.
But it isn't the theory of legal law that you read the rule first before you put the intent of the law into place. The word says any, and you're providing an intent that it was intended to prevent increases. Maybe that was the intent, but that is not what was written in the law.
Yeah, again, Sam Taylor, for the record, I think what we've talked about earlier, and I think I've sort of already addressed this particular issue, is the elimination of the excess allocations is not going to happen with the proposed changes that Sam put forth. So they're not recommending any changes to the number of allocations. And so I think that that matter has been addressed by staff, quite frankly, in the proposed changes.
So if the number of allocations over 50 years is 26,812, and in 2032, say, we burn 100 of them, what is the remaining allocations? 26,712. Tell me how that's not a change in the total number of allocations over 50 years.
Are you talking about eliminating the unused allocations going forward? Is that what you're referring to?
Correct. Or even dropping off the vested units after that many years?
Yeah, if we start getting into that topic, to be perfectly honest, I would request that the Planning Commission provide us with an opportunity to have a non-meeting, discuss that in more detail with council.
So this is too difficult for the legal council to provide an opinion on the spot, yet we need to provide a decision on the spot?
Well, it's something I'm not prepared to discuss in public, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. So it's too complicated an issue to derive from legal language and in the past, how we would change this, yet we, as planning commissions, who aren't lawyers, are supposed to sit up here and digest this and change a whole bunch of things that somebody wrote, took months to do, and stakeholders were involved. And instead, we're changing something based off what three people have said we need to change. Moving forward through the whole thing is that whole item four. I mean, that's my biggest problem. Like Bryce said, a lot of the littler things, I don't take many issue with. When we're talking about these excess allocations and hitting 2%, even Jim Slade can agree that 2% is 2% after 50 years. And if you're at 1% and you go to 3%, you're still at 2%. And so what we had aimed for in the beginning was 2%. We have never hit 2% in any of the years. I mean, we're talking about a growth ordinance that's never even been used. We've never used this. We put it into place, and the economy said, no, you're not going to use that. I can guarantee you that if we get over this amount, there can be a point where the economy says, no, you're not using that again. And we will create more excess allocations. My biggest problem with number four was that it removed the excess allocations. If we already limit it to 10%, we can then have just a 10% limitation every year. If we hit 580, and we have to take 58 out, next year, we don't have 580. We have less. 10% of that is less. But then the 10-year restrictions where we lose those pool? I mean, I can't find anything in here that is a positive adjustment for anyone, except for the three people who have asked for this. I haven't had anybody stand up here and say anything negative. I mean, I haven't heard any negative comments on the public comment channel saying that we support the changes to the growth ordinance. However, Jim Slade and what was the Sustainable Growth Initiative seems to say that they support it. Now, they're only changing their own mind because they say 2% works. Now, I say sustainable growth, but in every instance, they say they compromised. So however you use sustainable growth, if you were always compromising out of what you thought was sustainable, sounds like we had an anti-growth group, we had a positive growth group, and they met in the middle. So why are we saying that the middle's no longer the middle? I can't understand why we're adding language, and we're having lawyers up here that can't even explain how that would be defended. I mean, I don't want to put us into any litigation. I mean, litigation's only expensive. All of us pay for it in this room, and all of us pay for your time even to be here. So three hours later, I feel like we wasted three hours of paying you. And I'm sorry, Sam.
Thank you, Brian. Maureen or Kristi, observations on where we're at now or where we should proceed, how we should proceed? Kristi, anything you wanted to jump in with?
I would just say I fully agree with the three statements that were just made. I do think we're rushing this, and we haven't engaged the stakeholders. And the intended and unintended consequences are just something that I can't go forward with any part of this because of that, so.
Thank you, Kristi. Maureen?
Well, first, I'd like to thank people who are here, the public, for their comments and their patience through all of this. I want to thank staff for all the time that they've spent on this ordinance. With regards to the grandfathering that was brought up for people who would have projects that were in the works before this ordinance is changed. On 20.560.080, package page 31, it says projects with pre-existing development agreements under A talks about prior to the effective date. Would that apply to projects like Big George and Valley Knowles? Are we only talking about the pre-existing vested projects?
There's a section we haven't modified, is that correct?
Yes.
I don't have it in front of me, sorry. But it's, I imagine, I don't know what legal counsel's going to say on this, but my opinion is that that applied to the original ordinance as it went into place.
Okay, 2007.
Yeah, we didn't put any language in there for those exemptions.
In reading the changes that you've made, I don't see that anything will drastically affect their projects, but that's why I'm asking, because I don't know if there is anything that would drastically affect the projects that they have in the works right now.
Not that was specifically added to the ordinance that we have presented to you guys.
Thank you. Also, I want to thank Mr. Slade and Mr. West for sharing their time and their expertise. I appreciate it. I learned a lot today. Personally, I would accept most of the recommendations from staff. I think a unit is a unit is a unit. So clarifying that accessory dwelling allocations, whether it's a property owner or a contractor, they're all individual allocations. I think that reviewing with regards to census data determining the 2% growth rate should be adjusted in the future. And I think it should go on the ballot in 2022, that the compounded 2% needs to be changed. I think it should be a strict 2%. I agree with Brian. But it's not my interest rate in the bank. I don't want to see it with the growth rate. I think that the rollover pool should go away, whether that is the excess allocation pool or whatever it's called, because the jargon changes from day to day, whatever that's called in these sections. I agree with that going away. I think that's under section 20.560.110B. That is, it's under that. I agree that section 20.560.110C, parentheses four, is rough. The language, it's confusing with regards to the language on whether we can change the allocations, whether they may change the allocations. That language, I had to get clarification from Jim Slade. It is very confusing. And I am glad to see the banking and borrowing go away. I am happy that our comments will be sent to the Board of Commissioners. I would be able to vote to send this on, a recommendation to the Board, but since we are missing a commissioner today, we would have a, perhaps a tied vote, which would leave us with a no vote. So I will side with the majority and say there is nothing to send on to the Board other than our comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. That was a very good summary. And I did want to mention the fact that we are missing one Planning Commission member today, and I think his voice is important to be heard on this issue. So if I can go back and summarize, I don't want to dismiss the fact that the Board of County Commissioners did take action on this in July. And I agree with the summation that the staff put in the Planning Commission Agenda Action Sheet, which said after presentation and discussion, the Board directed staff to immediately bring back possible adjustments based on comments made by the county commissioners. So I take that very seriously. I think we do have a mission to complete, but I agree with many of the comments that were made, that the complexity of at least one portion of this could use some additional thought and staff review. I would like to acknowledge all of the public comments made. I think they were very well spoken, and I hope those public comments can be amplified and expounded upon so that staff can have the benefit of the experienced people in the county. And I would also ask the people who submitted public comment, I think the two letters that we received today that were not included in the packet last night, need some attention by staff. And I would hope that the individuals who submitted those could continue to play a role in the process. So I'm hearing a fairly strong sentiment for not going ahead and recommending approval or disapproval of this or considering changes at this point and moving to the fourth option, which could be a continuance. So.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Sam Taylor, please, go ahead.
Sam Taylor, again, Douglas County DA, for the record. A few items to clear up. One is, just as to Maureen's point, in 2007, Big George did request to be exempted from the ordinance, but the Board denied that request. So I wanted to point that out. Specifically, the Board has already considered that and rejected Big George being exempted. And that was in April 19, 2007, they submitted a letter. In relation to Brian's point, I just wanted to note that it isn't that I'm unwilling or unable to provide a response to you, Brian. It's just I don't feel comfortable doing so in public, which is a much different proposition, because doing so would potentially tip our hand in the event of litigation. Because Justin, of course, brought it up, and so did Michael. So I'm being a little cautious with regard to that specific point. I hope you can appreciate that. And then finally, I just wanted to note that in the code, you can have a continuance, but under 2610030, the Planning Commission must consider the amendment at a public hearing within 30 days following the public hearing. So this is a public hearing, so you would have 30 days within which to provide your comments. So the continuance could be for a date specific, say, 20 days from now, which would allow enough time to generate the report, to provide it to the Board of County Commissioners. But it isn't indefinite. In other words, you have a specific timeframe within which to act and provide that report to the Board.
Thank you, Sam. On the last point, then, 30 days, would that go beyond to include the next regular scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission? I don't have my calendar right in front of me as far as the first Tuesday of September, second Tuesday of September, I'm sorry.
September 7th would be the date.
We would need to act before September 7th.
That's correct.
Okay. Would we need to set a date certain at this point in a motion? Or can we say to be scheduled at a date not to exceed 30 days?
It would be. Yeah, I'm going to do the 7th. Got distracted there. I apologize, Mr. Chair. What was your query again?
The question would be, do we have to set a date certain? Or can we, in a motion, say that this parameter would be continued to a date not to exceed the 30 days allowed under NRS?
It would be to a date certain.
To a date certain.
You would need to do it at a date certain.
Members of the Planning Commission have a date certain that they would like to continue this to, if that's the pleasure of the collective group? Bryce, and then Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, if I may. Coming back to my original comments, I think the concern that I have is the Board of County Commissioners gave 30 days to get to this point, and it's still pretty messy. I don't know if it's feasible to get all of the stakeholders together in less than 30 days to be able to deal with really text issues that I think are really inconsequential, that need to be cleaned up, and I'm not so sure that they're consequential to the issue that was brought before us today. So I'm just not sure that trying to get this done in less than 20 days so we can hear it in less than 30 days, accomplishes much. But that's just my opinion.
Brian?
I mean, I got a mirror with Bryce's. I mean, when I'm looking at the language, it was the pressures of continued growth that drove us to this point in the first place. We're saying that we've had a limit on resources, and yet we're in the middle of a resource study right now. So we're looking at changing an ordinance before we know if the essential resources, facilities, or services are reaching a level of full capacity. I mean, maybe Tom can fill us in. What's MGSD's current capacity? Are they 100% of what they can handle? Or are they, like Mr. Ted Thran has told me, around 40, 50% of what they can handle? And does the growth ordinance consider the fact that in 50 years, we'll have the 26,000? What does that do to the percentage? I don't see anything here that literally tells me why we even did this today, other than, like I said, the three commissioners. But then that goes back to the next point. What's the point of denying, approving, or continuing if they don't care? I mean, that's the unfortunate thing that all of us in the room are dealing with right now, and I can see it in every single person's face, except for Jim Slade.
Thank you, Brian. Was there a question there that you were hoping that Tom Delaire would answer? Rhetorical and facetious, thank you. Points well taken. Let me think out loud and explore further than with the staff or with the members of the Planning Commission. I think it's worthwhile making a continuance. I think it's worthwhile making another stab at this. I think Sam's staff has got us 90% of the way there. I would hope that the recommendations that we could make to the Board of County Commissioners would make a difference. I think they have a number of individuals who are very thoughtful and very concerned and well-intentioned. And I think our mission should be fulfilled in that.
And I think our mission should be fulfilled in that providing them with wise counsel and recommendations would do a lot to increase their confidence in our abilities and the role that we play. So I would hope that we could come to agreement on a date certain at which we continue this. We're only allowed one continuance. I would take, we can't consider it once again and then continue once again.
Sam Taylor again, on behalf of Douglas County DA, says, as long as you hold the hearing before the 7th and transmit it within 30 days, I think you can do it any way you want. You could have continuance to dates specific, two weeks from now, and then another one a week thereafter, or whatever, as long as-
But final action must be taken within 30 days.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I'm at the pleasure of my colleagues. Christie, any wisdom on your end? Or do you want to see what anybody else would say as far as continuance to a date certain before the 30 days expires?
I was just looking for some clarity. If we were to take a vote and then not approve, what happens in that case? Does it not go back to the Board at all, and they don't hear anything? Can the Board separately take action? What happens if it's, if we deny this?
I can ask Sam Taylor for a specific opinion, but my view is, once we take action, whether it's approval, approval with changes, or denial, we're finished with the subject, and the Board of County Commissioners can take any action that they deem necessary at that point. So they could approve, they could deny, they could make changes that they felt necessary.
Sam Taylor again, on behalf of Douglas County DA. You are correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Let me see if I can move the discussion along by asking the staff. Would the staff be comfortable with setting a date in three weeks, perhaps, before the Labor Day holiday? And be able to come back to us with a set of modifications that we could consider at
Yes, Chairman Walder, this is Sam Booth for the record. We'll try to accommodate the Planning Commission however we can. I think, you know, potentially a Tuesday, since the Commission's used to meeting on a Tuesday, would work. There's quite a few difficulties, as you can imagine, in scheduling a meeting, just confirming that this room is free. If this room isn't free, we usually go to the CBIC Hall, confirming a reservation at the CBIC Hall, finding a location for the meeting, and availability of staff to clerk the meeting as well is always a concern. But, you know, we'll make our best effort.
Thank you. So we would be looking at, if my, I don't have my calendar in front of me, but just extrapolating the dates, the 24th or the 31st of August? Do people have conflicts? Or can we try and have some accommodation to meet on either of those days, to try and get a resolution on this matter?
Mr. Chair-
Maureen.
If I may, I don't, it could be my brain, but I don't understand what the point of another meeting is. I know you want to send something to the Board, but I agree with Bryce. It seems rather rushed. I don't think staff has the time to do what they think we want. I don't know what we want to accomplish. I agree that the stakeholders don't have time to weigh in. We've made our comments. I don't think we have to send anything more than our comments to the Board. I don't think we absolutely have to take an action, do we? Sam Taylor?
Sam Taylor again, Douglas County DA for the record. No, you can just submit your recommendations. So, what's that?
Brian?
Yeah, it's reported in minutes. So there should be something developed by staff. But normally, staff takes, for example, in these instances, your comments, and then puts them into like a form of a report, and then they would transmit that report to the Board of County Commissioners. That's normally how we do it. If you vote on a specific motion, then the text of that motion would be what would be provided to the Board. And like, say, for example, if you wanted to adopt every change except for the one contained in 2650, you know, 110, you know, then that would be the exemption, and that would be presented to the Board.
Thank you, Sam. Brian, did you have a question or a suggestion?
I mean, the only thing I appreciate about the continuance is the chance to read cleaned-up language, you know, because there was some confusing language in there. But at the same time, we're going to spend three hours talking about the same thing. I mean, are we going to really put ourselves through that instead of just today, say, we don't like XYZ, let's just say we don't like it, and let's put it on the table now? I mean, we've got six members, we can put votes on individual items if we had to, to at least put forward a recommendation of what we like and what we don't like. Then continuing, we just come back, do the same conversation, same people, same thing. Maybe cleaner language. So I'd appreciate us almost voting on the changes individually, as opposed to even continuing at this point.
Thank you. Other comments? We can start to plow through if that's the pleasure of the Planning Commission. And then if there's a section that we want to make no recommendations on, or we want to amplify our comments on, we can do that. As I said before, I think if you look at, and Maureen encapsulated this very well, if you look at the evaluation on page 20, I think we're almost all the way home on every one of those sections except the 110, and maybe the first part and the last part. Should we try and do that in the next 15, 20 minutes or 30 minutes, rather than having a continuance? Okay, all right. Then I think the proper process might be to just go section by section, and if we can lump them together in groups, for efficiency's sake, I think there's a lot that we don't need to hash out or have a discussion on, or provide our specific recommendations on the record. So let's try and do it this way. We start on packet page 23, and I think there's about four or five sections that go all the way through page 26 that just contain that definition on accessory dwellings. So does anybody have any objections, reservations, or comments on the sections through 2560.050? I'm sorry, 20, page, through page 26, so it'd be 23 to through 26, not including the Okay. If we don't have comments or reservations on that, then I think it would be, it would be the consensus that those provisions, that really one change is acceptable. Then let's move over to section 20.560.060, the general provisions. There's some strike-throughs on banking and borrowing, which don't seem to be controversial. The section on the census review, the staff has provided in the supplemental packet, a modification which would just eliminate language regarding the Board and the administrative procedures. So the only change that we'd be considering is the sentence beginning additionally after each decennial census, and ending with future growth projections. And basically, this just gives the Board latitude and direction that they should take the census information into account when they would make any modification to allocations. Bryce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess the concern that I have with that is, the Board doesn't have the ability to make any adjustments in allocations.
Mark, unless we want to let Sam Taylor interject? Go ahead, Mark.
That's Douglas County DA, Sam Taylor again. Just for the record, that would be the same thing that would recommend a non-meeting. We could hold, you know, maybe a 15-minute recess or something to go through some of these things. If you wanted to do that, we could do that here at this meeting. Or you could have a continuance and have a non-meeting, and then come back at a later time. But discussing that in toto is not something I'm prepared to do on the record here, just because possible litigants are sitting here waiting with bated breath for me to say something so they can use it against us.
If I can jump in, Sam Taylor, I'm not going to provide legal authority, so they can't jump down my throat, right? I guess the way I would read that, Bryce, is it's just an amplification of the first part of the sentence, which talks about the 2011 review. And it doesn't, to me, extend them more authority, so if they were to determine, based on the census, that allocations should be adjusted, that they would still have to abide by the requirement that any modifications would be required to be submitted to an advisory vote before implementation? Maybe that's lame in your estimation, but-
Mr. Chairman, I would never call your statements lame. But given that we don't have an opinion, I wouldn't feel comfortable moving forward with a recommendation to a change in the ordinance without that.
That point well taken. Then perhaps our observation on this one should be that the Board should, before adoption of that language, carefully review with counsel any ramifications of the modification in language. Brian?
So, I mean, going based off what Bryce says, I mean, this is kind of that, give them all the power that 256070 says they can't have. Mr. Slade said they had to work hard to get it so that this had to go to the courts, so that the Board themselves could not make this change. However, this sentence right here says they can. It does not provide any qualifying factors. It does, it just says current population data. We cannot exceed 2% growth. I mean, it's impossible. So how could we possibly have anything that affects anything in a downward or upward, you know, adjustment? So I don't see why this is even necessary. I mean, I do like the analysis of the census, but I think that's, I mean, a whole other issue that doesn't even belong here.
Mr. Chair, if I may? Like I did in the master plan, I think maybe I can offer a friendly amendment to this particular provision, which might actually resolve some of the concerns that Bryce and Brian have. For example, where the word is "shall" be adjusted, just say "may be adjusted based on historical growth rates, current population data, and future growth projections, comma, subject to other provisions or other restrictions contained in this chapter," which would then apply to whatever your concerns are. And I think that would alleviate the problem, at least with respect to this. Because I think, if I may, I think the underlying idea is a good one, because the census data in growth should be a factor in determining whether or not an adjustment to the 2% is required or necessitated. So that's just my-
But they can't move that without a vote by us. So why include something to allow them the ability to do something that currently they can't do? I mean, we're giving people the ability to do something based off a really poorly-written statement here that, like I said, provides no reason for them to want to adjust it. They can analyze it and say, shoot, we looked at the data and says we need to adjust. Historical growth rates, current population, future growth projections say so. I mean, it just gives them a, we say so. I mean, this is basically the, we say so, so 256070 doesn't apply, because we say so, and the decennial census will be contorted into whatever works for that Board at that time. So, you know, I'm looking at a sentence that literally undermines a later sentence in this own section, I mean, just this page. So that's why I'm looking at it as a problem. I don't mind, you know, dissecting the decennial census to change the allocations between project and individual allocations. However, to change the entire allocations altogether, I think is subject to the 56007O.
I think you make some good points, Brian. Maureen, did you have a suggestion or comment on how we might further modify?
Yes, I think the confusion is coming in that it's an administrative review, it's not legislative. So if we put periodic administrative review, that might clarify the whole thing.
Sam Taylor, if you want to opine on that. I think maybe, Maureen, if we're adding the word administrative under periodic review, we might be extending and constricting the remaining language that's in there, just at first blush. But Sam Taylor, Maureen's suggestion is, when you go to letter H, you revise periodic review to mean periodic administrative review.
Sam Taylor again, for the record. I would just note that making that change alone would not resolve necessarily the concern that Brian has, which is that the Board has some sort of authority to modify the percentage of growth allocation without going to the voters. So that's why I was recommending after the word "projections," just adding comma, subject, you know, to other constraints in this chapter. "In this chapter" refers to the chapter in its entirety for the growth management ordinance, which would then tie you back to the restriction relative to the voters. So in other words, that would be encapsulated within this particular provision, and they would be subject to it.
So I think I kind of like that, Sam, because if you put that, then it says that if they want to change the increase or decrease, this says they can analyze it, they can propose an allocation, but then have to move to the vote to get that approved, is what it sounds like you're saying that would add. Is that kind of what you're saying?
I'm saying they'd be subject to other requirements in the chapter. So I don't really want to go beyond that.
Ask me how much you can put in IRA. I'll give you that answer.
Mark?
Yes, no, I think that Sam Taylor's wording change is good, and I would accept that.
Okay. Do we need that stated for the record? Or were you able to capture that, Sam Booth?
I didn't capture that yet. Can we say that one more time?
Okay. So where it says the Board shall review, you put in "may review," the results of the census. So it's, no, the Board, up above, Sam.
There's two "shalls" there. Do you want to change them both to "may," or just the-
May, "may review the results."
Just the second one.
Yeah, so make it permissive, so the Board can decide to do it or not. Let's not tell the Board what to do. And if the total number of allocations may be adjusted based on the historical growth rate, okay, so the second "shall" shall be "may," there you go. And then after "projections," do a comma, "subject to other requirements of this chapter."
Thank you, Sam. And Sam, is that clear to everyone? Or should we have that reread? Christie, are you following along here? Or can you see the screen, and does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Okay. Any other observations or suggestions? If not, and we're in agreement on this, we could say that this is our recommendation on this, in this section, section 060. Okay. I don't think we need to take specific votes on these unless there appears to be a division of opinion. So we'll say that that's the recommendation on this section, and we'll move to section 070. I think we've talked about this in great detail, but I don't think there's any sentiment to make any changes there, nor were there any staff recommendations. We'll move forward to-
I don't like the compounding.
If you would like to discuss that in greater detail, we can discuss that. I think that will open up a great amount of comments on many sides of the issues, but please go ahead with, Brian?
I just wanted to make a comment on compounding. So we all have this argument, right? If we set it at 2% of today, is that 2% of tomorrow? No, it's less than 2%. Is it 2% of the next year? No, it's even less than 2%. Eventually, we get down to 0.1% if we set it at a number. Percentages are based off historical data, and us accountants use percentages more than anything, because the numbers themselves don't lead to an analysis. Percentages are based off an accumulation of data and an analysis that has come to that decision. If we go then and say 2% of this year, we end up with 0.1%. If we go then and say 2% of this year, we end up with 0.1% by year 2050. And I'm sorry, I can't ever agree with that.
Other comments, or Maureen, do you want to put your comments on the record, or take a vote?
I just believe it should be a straight 2%, and I think they should go to the ballot and have that changed.
Thank you very much. I would agree with Brian that we should leave this as it exists. Other observations, or can we move on to the next sections? Okay. There were not any changes in 0.090 or 100 and 0.080. I'm going wrong in order there, I'm sorry. So through the affordable housing, 0.10, there were no changes. We now come to the big enchilada, which is the 110 procedures. And given the difference of opinion that we seem to have on this one, I think it might be the wisest course of action, just for individuals to comment on the changes that were made in any of the sections. Most particularly, that would be B and C four, those are the two sections that they If people have other suggestions or would want to make motions or recommendations, then we can do it that way, but go ahead, Bryce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I come back to the challenge that I'm having with this, and that is that both Mr. Slade and Mr. West haven't had an opportunity, you know, what I would, in a perfect world, I would have liked both of them to be able to provide input and weigh in on whatever it is that we're deciding here at the end of the day in terms of a recommendation. I think the first one that we went through, fairly self-explanatory, fairly easy, you know, as we go forward, you know, even when we talk about the banking, that, well, it seems pretty simple, let's just get rid of it. Well, is it? I don't know. I mean, I'm not a stakeholder in this. So neither side has really had an opportunity to weigh in on what we're moving forward with, which is really the basis of my concern overall. You know, with any of these recommendations is, they've just been, it's been put together, and even after four and a half hours, we're still here trying to figure it out, and we're not even the stakeholders, so...
Thank you. Other comments on how we can best weigh in on section 110 for the board to have our opinions or our consensus?
Mr. Chair?
Sam Taylor, yes.
I would, again, Sam Taylor, for the record, Douglas County DA, I would just offer maybe a recommendation. If, I don't think subsection A or B gives anybody major heartaches, does it?
Clarification on B, if Sam can say what the project allocations will be distributed with up to five allocations per applicant in successive rounds. I mean, I guess, just not being a builder, I don't understand that statement. You know, is that limiting how many allocations that project person can take, or can they take five applications every day until they're done? I mean, how does that actually affect it? That's the only portion of this B that I can't understand.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Sam.
Yes, Sam Booth, deputy director, for the record. Thank you, Mr. Olin. It's a practice that staff hasn't had to implement yet, because we haven't reached that limit. But that language I just took from another section of the code that would, talked about, already talked about what would happen once we reached the limit of allocations for any year. So that's not new language that I proposed, but as I understand it, yeah, so it's five allocations per applicant in successive rounds. So if we have 10 applicants that come in, that make applications, we go to the first one, we give them five allocations, we go to the second one, give them five allocations, till we get to, excuse me, the bottom, and then we start back over issuing five to each, until each, all of the allocations are issued. Now, whether that happens in the first month of the year and all the allocations are given out then, or we, you know, we give out a portion of those and there's no one else waiting in line, we go a few months and we have several people come at the same time, then we would, again, only five to the person that's waiting there.
If I may, Mr. Chair, to add up on, or follow up on what Sam said, if you look at subsections D and E of sub 110, you'll see the same language. All he's doing, Mr. Booth is doing, is applying, you know, the limitations there in D and E to subsection B, which relate to the 2% allocations given each year. So it's just transmitting. And my point was originally that I think A and B, you could maybe approve, and it wouldn't be controversial, and maybe leave item C four, and then just provide whatever comment you want to on that particular provision.
Thank you, Sam. Yeah, I think that's the wisest course of action. Bryce has given some comments that he's not comfortable in making a solid recommendation, and he believes that there should be more input from interested parties, and I think that's a valid one. I'd like to go ahead and give some recommendations. I'm not sure if anybody else on the planning commission is willing to do that, but I've thought about this long and hard. So what I would recommend to the board is that we come up with a process to utilize the excess allocations over a certain time period, whether that's a percentage of the existing excess allocations, or a fixed number. I don't really have a preference, there's pros and cons on either side. My essential suggestion would be that no allocations expire at any point, and that if the excess allocations need to be distributed over a period of longer than 10 years, then they continue to be carried over for 11, or 12, or 13 more year, or 13 years as necessary so that no allocations would expire. And then I would also continue the recommendation that I've made in the past, that we also, the board also give careful consideration to changing the existing 70-30 individual allocations to project allocations, to a 50-50 allocation, or as has been suggested by several people, a allocation similar to what's done in Carson City, and I can explain that again in greater detail. What Carson City does is they set the number of allocations as a fixed number for projects and individuals. That fixed number only applies to the first three months of the year. Then, in the fourth, fifth, and sixth month of the year, the allocations are capped at a larger percentage, so that individuals and projects still have a, an overall cap, but it's, allows them the ability to use the allocations in the remaining three months at a larger rate. Then, after the first six months of the year over, it's essentially a free-for-all, so that there's no division between any remaining allocations between projects and individuals. If the individuals want to go to a larger number than the individuals, they're free to go to a larger number. If the projects come in at a larger number, the projects go into a larger number. So I would make the recommendation to the board that they either eliminate the project pool and the individual pool and lump them all together, or they go to a modified system that recognizes that the 70-30 split is no longer a advisable division of the pools. So that would be my recommendation for handling C four. And I would then turn it over to anybody else who wanted to make recommendations that will go on the record for this, under the assumption that we can't get a consensus on any one individual recommendation. Brian?
So, kind of to mirror what you're saying there, Kirk, you know, I do not like the excess allocations going away. Reason being is that to achieve the 2% growth that even Mr. Slade has said is needed for sustainability, we're going to have to have those excess allocations. You know, the 10% limitation, if it doesn't stop the allocations in year 11, still remains in effect, and, you know, I would love to be able to put a graphic up there that shows how it would go, because we have homes that are increasing at 2% as the amount to build, but if you have the excess of 580, and you hit the excess, you know, nothing goes into that pool, that pool goes down. So the next time you go to that 10%, you have less. And so if we have an increase on one side and a decrease on the other, we're leveling out that growth, as Mr. Slade actually has intended all along. You know, instead of just removing the excess allocations, why don't we look at a limitation such as that 10%? I mean, 10% sounds like it came out of somebody's mouth, though. I think we should probably analyze something that came out of, I'm not so sure what the person does. But, you know, when we look at analyzing that number, if we do set that percentage, you know, it does limit, as we've said, you know, hitting that boom period. It does prevent possibly, you know, the going way too high in a single year, and I think that's what we're intending. But then to mirror what Kirk's saying on the project versus individual allocation pool, if we look right now, we've got 47% allocated to the vested projects, and then 30% of the remaining 50% goes to the other projects. We get 64% going to projects right now, approximately. I use 33% instead of 30, so if anybody wants to check the math. But then if we have 70% of the 53% for the individuals, they're getting 35% of the current allocation. In 2032, individuals get 70%. The allocation doubles. The individuals start getting twice as much as the developers, and the individuals can't even build as fast as they're building today, but we're going to give them double the allocations. And I think the board really should look at the things that are wrong with this, not the things that are not wrong with this ordinance.
Bryce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, listening to today, I mean, my understanding is it took months or years, whatever it took to get to the 2007 ordinance that we have today, and we've been utilizing that ordinance for 14 years. On July 1st, a particular county commission, and I don't care if it's this county commission or any county commission, decided that we needed to immediately review this ordinance. I don't particularly know, I haven't had a chance to watch that particular commission meeting. I don't understand, usually when the words "immediately" are used, it's because there's some potential imminent danger or crisis looming within the county, that this has become an urgent matter that needs to be addressed. And so it took years to get to the 2007 ordinance. It's taken, it's been utilized for 14 years, and in 30 days, we're supposed to immediately propose fixes that don't include the same stakeholders that spent those prior years developing where we are today, and have worked together to accomplish what's been accomplished in 14 years. I just can't get my head around why we wouldn't give these folks a couple months, two or three months, to hammer out these things while, as was mentioned earlier, we've got a water study that's been commissioned, we have different interested parties that are doing studies of their own. Why wouldn't we, if history teaches us anything, it's that whatever we did the first time didn't work, and I sense that we're doing that same thing again. And so I just don't understand why the haste and immediate need to resolve this here, and I'm not the smartest guy on the block, I don't know that I'm capable of addressing all of these issues without the input, you know, without Jim's input, without Aaron West's input, without the business community's input. And so I'm just really struggling with this.
Thank you, Bryce. I think that's a very good observation, and I would add to this, I meant to mention something about this earlier, is essentially the effective date of this is not until January of 2022. So I, again, want to mention that the board has determined that this is of great importance to move quickly on, but this won't become effective until January of 2022. And staff, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Well, Mr. Chair, I get that it won't be effective until January of '22, but if we push forward recommendations today, and they are adopted by the county commission next month, then it really doesn't matter when they go into effect, they're essentially, it's done.
Yes, the point I was trying to make is, I would hope that the board would recognize and acknowledge that they believe that it is of the utmost importance to do this as quickly as possible, but they should recognize that nothing will take effect until January 1 of 2022. So they do have an abundance of time to get it right. We unfortunately do not. Am I correct on that, the effective date, January 21, January 1, 2022?
It would be easy for us to keep track of that if it was January 1, due to the calendar year that we're tracking the allocations today. That would be, that would be ideal, but it doesn't, it doesn't actually address that in the ordinance. Today, I think it could potentially be effective, you know, November, December, in that timeframe after the two hearings from the board, but for staff and tracking purposes, it would be much better to have that as a January 1 date.
Thank you very much, Tom. Now I do see that on packet page 37, the effective date has been left open, and I agree with you 100%. If we're going to make the kind of changes that we're going to make, we're going to cause you a nightmare if we say it's effective on September 17th. So Bryce, your point is well taken. I wasn't meaning to suggest that we should have hasty action because we don't think it's going to take effect till next January. I was suggesting that the board has ample time to do a good job on their review and their soliciting input and their modifications. We unfortunately do not. Brian, Mark, you've had your hand up quite a bit.
Yes. So on item number four, Sam Taylor was very clear that we can't change the number, and although I would like to limit it to, you know, 10% or 50 or 60 houses using up the unused allocations, if we do that, the county's going to get sued. Some builder's going to come in and maybe need all of the unused allocations in one year, and by making that change, we're going to get sued, and so I don't think I can make any changes to that section.
Very good point, thank you. Other recommendations or thoughts that people would like to put on the record for the board to consider as far as our views on section 110?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Sam Taylor.
I would just like to clarify something, if I may, that Mark said, again, Sam Taylor, for the record, Douglas County DA. When I spoke earlier about this issue, I was talking about changing the total number of allocations. Restricting allocations within a given year, like say, for example, over a 10-year period, you're doing 10% of the excess pool, as long as you don't eliminate the excess pool, you're not eliminating allocations. So I think part of that might be allowed, but part of it may not. And again, the proposed change that Sam had presented to you addressed specifically the unused allocation, so you're not changing the total number of allocations here.
Thank you, Sam. While that may be palatable to you and to me, and we may think it's a good idea, I still believe that some builder may walk through the door, maybe it's Big George Ventures or somebody that has 500 homes ready to go, and we've made that change, and he's going to come back and say, I'm sorry, county, you changed the rules halfway through the project.
Yeah, I'm not speaking to whether or not it's a sound policy decision, I was just talking about the reduction of allocations.
So let me get to Mark's point. If we get to year 2050 and we have 500 left, and we can only use 10, 50 of them, how many get burned? 450 would change the total. I think that's what Mark's saying.
Again, I think the language that Sam proposed makes it very clear that no unused allocation would go away at the end of the 10-year period. So if you adopted that language, recommended that language to the board, I think that would satisfy their requirement.
Other comments on this section? Let's move then, I don't believe there were other changes except to the elimination of the banking and borrowing. of the banking and borrowing. Comments on elimination of banking borrowing are, I know, Bryce, that you thought we needed a little further elaboration on that. I thought I heard, uh, some comments that that was acceptable, uh, to builders, but, uh, I'd be interested in other observations people have on, on whether elimination, limiting of banking and borrowing is, uh, is something we would recommend. Brian?
Well, I mean, I think it becomes not required if we allocate all of the, you know, um, permits at the beginning of the year, because the way I'm reading banking and borrowing, even though it mentions over multiple years, you know, if we were only issuing according to quarters, too, you know, the, they have to go to the next quarter to borrow backwards. So, you know, when I'm looking at banking and borrowing, yeah, it does, you know, it can never exceed 2%, but at the same time, I think it possibly is just a section that we don't even need. So, you know, I really don't like, you know, saying that we don't need something, but I think we don't need this. Um, and I think even, uh, our Builder Alliance guy at some point didn't quite understand exactly, and if he wants to clarify exactly what he thought it was for, um, from a building perspective, I'd love to hear what the Building Department thinks about the banking and borrowing.
Mr. Chair, if I may, real quick. I would just like to clarify one important point about banking and borrowing. Banking and borrowing cannot be utilized in the existing code without a development agreement. And, um, just to let you know, in the event that the board wants to enter into a development agreement, it can employ the same concept for banking and borrowing relative to allocations because it wouldn't necessarily be bound by, um, the growth management ordinance, per se. So it just, in a sense, is superfluous. I mean, but, I mean, in the absence of a development agreement, it cannot be used.
Other comments on, uh, on what we've gone over? Um, would you prefer then, uh, Sam Taylor, a motion that, uh, suggests that we have made recommendations on the entire, um, proposed changes in the ordinance 21, uh, 2021 1589, but have no overall recommendation? Or should we just let the record stand for the comments that we've made?
Uh, Sam Taylor, again, for the record, Douglas County DAs. I, I think you can do it whichever way suits your interests best and what your ultimate goal is with respect to the outcome.
Thank you. Brian?
So I'll move that we forward the recommendations that have been stated here on the record without a recommendation for approval or denial of the ordinance in its entirety.
Brian has made the motion to forward our recommendations without, uh, a expression of approval of, or denial. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Mark seconds the motion. Uh, is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. Uh, we can take a, uh, voice vote on this, and if we need to record our individual comp, uh, vote, uh, we can do that. All in favor of Brian's motion to, uh, recommend we forward our comments to the Board of County Commissioners without recommendation, either approval or denial, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Bryce, uh, do you have additional comments that you would like to make on your opposition?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I've been pretty clear on, on my position with respect to not engaging the stakeholders, uh, in this process.
Thank you. And Christie, I believe I heard you as an aye vote, so on this, there would be five votes aye, and Bryce would be one vote nay, and, uh, the motion is agreed to.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Sam.
Um, real quick, as a clarification, included in the motion was no discussion relative to the proposed changes that Mr. Booth had presented, uh, with his presentation. Um, was it the intent of the maker of the motion that those be, those changes be included, or would you want to address those separately?
So I would include those in the motion as that was part of the changes that we had discussed today.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Brian. Um, we'll conclude this, uh, agenda item then, and, uh, I'd like to take maybe a, a 10 or 15-minute break before we move on to items three and four. So we'll come back at approximately, uh, eight minutes after six. We'll stand in recess. I think everybody has returned to the room, and Christie, I'm going to guess that you are waiting patiently for us to resume the meeting.
Recording in progress.
Christie, if you can confirm you're still with us? Okay, thank you very much, Christie. We also have a little bit of a lag sometimes in hearing you. So I'll call the Planning Commission back into session. We do have five members here. We have Christie with us on the Zoom link, so we have a quorum. And our next item is item three. This is for possible action discussion on ordinance 2021-1587, a zoning text amendment to amend Title 20, Chapter 20.600, golf courses, and Chapter 20.691, penalties and enforcement fees, to add a new section 20.691.350, requiring a maintenance plan for closed golf courses and increasing public nuisance fees from $125 to $250 for residential properties and from $125 to $750 for non-residential properties. Sam Booth will recognize you for making a presentation, and then we'll proceed with questions and action.
Thank you Chairman Walder. This is Sam Booth, for the record. I'm going to, I think, defer this presentation to our Chief Civil DA Doug Ritchie. Doug has a little background of where this request for this ordinance has come from and kind of the particular issues. I did assist with drafting the staff report, and we'll just note that in your packet and in the staff report, I have done as we did on the last ordinance and gone through each of the proposed changes. But as you just read with the title, the item essentially relating to maintenance of golf courses and open space associated with golf courses and the public nuisances that they may pose.
Thank you, Sam. Doug, take it away on the presentation, and then we'll go forward.
Thank you Chairman. Thank you Planning Commissioners for allowing me to present today. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Although this is in the form of an ordinance, this is more, it has not been introduced to the Board of County Commissioners. This is more of an outline of issues that were raised by members of the public. It was requested by the Board of County Commissioners to be brought to the Planning Commission. In summary, the issue has been, the concern has been, is that large open spaces like a golf course pose a unique problems due to their size. For instance, if I have a lawn that I don't maintain, it's a blight on the neighborhood. It may be overgrown. It may die. It may pose a fire hazard. But my small lawn versus acres and acres of golf course, it's an artificial environment, poses a larger hazard. The reason these are small, narrowly focused proposed changes is to try and address those issues. In the supplemental material, an attorney did draft some questions or some concerns they had with the proposal for a maintenance plan for a golf course that although is still open is not operating. There's been some discussion about the Henderson ordinance. Just to be clear, this ordinance isn't trying to adopt the Henderson ordinance into Title 20, into the Douglas County Code, although there are aspects of it that are being adopted. One of the proposed changes that was made by the attorney was that instead of 14 days for a golf course that is no longer commercially operating, instead of 14 days, move that to 30 days so that, for instance, in the winter, if the golf course closes down, but they're still maintaining the property, they will have 30 days to file a maintenance plan if they continue to not operate for that period of time. Also, there was a request that instead of immediately hiring a third-party maintenance company, that the golf course owner could continue to maintain the property for that period of time. These seem like reasonable changes or proposals to changes to the ordinance. Again, this is just a framework for the Planning Commission to work off of. Again, the issue is golf courses and other large open spaces pose a unique threat, not only for the fire hazard, but also like in a golf course, there'll be water hazards, water features, and if they aren't maintained, they can become a breeding ground for mosquitoes, things like that. I am available for any questions. Again, this is for the Planning Commission's feedback and recommendations to the board.
Thank you very much Doug. I'll open up to Planning Commission members for questions or comments. Maureen.
Doug, are golf courses hard zoned as open space?
I don't believe they are as hard zoned as open space.
Are they hard zoned as anything? Or can they be sold for development?
Recreation, Tom Delaire, Community Development Director is the answer. Commissioner Casey is the, it's private. Recreation is usually the hard zone that the golf courses actually have as a zoning around the golf course itself that encompass all their open space. It's just private recreation.
Okay, so the supplemental material that we received, there is no threat to the adjacent development that this property in particular could be sold for development and more housing? No? Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Brian.
So Doug, you guys said you changed that 14 days to 30 days. So the golf course in the winter time, you say, is closed down. So within 30 days, they got to submit a maintenance plan to maintain what in the winter when nothing grows and mosquitoes don't breed?
Chairman, if I may. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Just to clarify, the original draft language had 14 days with the idea that, for instance, in August, grass will be dead within a week or two days, sorry, a week or two weeks. However, in the winter, if they aren't open, you're right, it may be longer, and there may be an adjustment to that, maybe 60 days. Again, the idea, though, is that if a golf course is no longer operating, they're free to do that, but they need to submit some sort of maintenance plan so the county is confident that it won't become a public nuisance or a hazard. And whether that's 30 days or 60 days.
That's what I was looking at, because the winter here, the hard winter is about two to three months. So I was thinking, you know, that 60 or 90 days might give them time to actually assess if operations are going to open again, because most businesses within 14 days, 30 days, may be able to reevaluate and reopen, but maybe it takes 60 or nine days to perform that reevaluation. I'm just looking at the hard winter time as, you know, we get a bad winter and they're closed for two, three months, there's nothing they can do about it. Not much to maintain either when it's covered in snow.
Just to follow up on that point, Doug and Brian, I think we're referring to the language on packet page 58, which is .030C, any golf course which ceases commercial operations for a period of two consecutive weeks or longer. Is that correct?
Well, I guess I would fall back to the word ceases. If the golf course closes for the winter, I don't think they've ceased commercial operations. They may have suspended commercial operations or reserved the golf course till a time when they can be open, but maybe that's just semantics. But so what your recommendation would be, Doug, would be for us to amend it from 30, from two consecutive weeks to 30 days?
Yes, that seems reasonable.
All right. And the other change that you suggested we might consider, I have missed that one.
It deals with three, C3, also hire a third-party professional landscape maintenance company to maintain the golf course. Again, the thought was that if they've ceased operations and they're no longer hiring staff, then a third-party maintenance company may be required. However, again, we're amenable, I mean, again, this is a policy decision for the Planning Commission as well as the Board of County Commissioners, but the idea is maybe a third-party maintenance company is required, only if they fail to honor their maintenance plan, then something like that would be required. So I'd be fine with striking that based on the comments from Mr. Cavellia.
Okay, so the suggestion would be there to strike three, C3, on the bottom of the page, packet page 58?
That's correct, Chairman.
Okay. Other questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission? Mark.
Yes. So when I'm looking at the top and you started talking about, you know, your lawn, it brought up the picture of my lawn, which is, you know, several hundred acres that is turned all yellow because there's no water in the river. Does it pose a fire hazard? Well, if your lawn poses a fire hazard, I guess this poses a fire hazard. So I read the ordinance, and all you talk about is golf courses, but I just want to make it perfectly clear that you're making an exemption for agriculture because we have no means of watering.
Chairman, if I may. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. This is limited to golf courses. As Sam Booth indicated in the staff report, there is a definition in the County Code for open spaces. Agriculture's not, doesn't fall within that definition. Now, that doesn't mean that we couldn't change it so that ag could be included, or that open spaces could be included. But we're talking about specific commercial operation.
Well, yes, but I'm reading your open space definition, and it says, "Open space: all areas of natural plant communities or areas replanted with vegetation after construction, including but not limited to revegetated natural light and air and are designed for either environmental, scenic, amenity, or recreational purposes." Well, if you're planting a field, you're revegetating it.
Okay. Well, I would defer to Community Development Staff and the Director on how they would interpret that.
Tom, would you care to respond to Mark's concern?
Yeah, I'm trying to formulate a response to that. I, you know, looking at this, the open space, I think, needs to be under like an actual easement. I would say not a 19-zoned land. I think we can make that determination, you know, in evaluating the specific situation.
So, Tom? Okay, I'll go. So what about Art Hall's Nature Conservancy? It's zoned as a open space conservancy. It's full of sagebrush. It's a big fire hazard, but I wouldn't expect him to go in there and try and mow down the sagebrush because they ruin the purpose. So I just want excluding agriculture in here somewhere.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Sam.
Sam Booth, Deputy Director, for the record. I just would like clarification from Mr. Ritchie, but in the ordinance 20, Section 20.600.30, this is specifically calling out, and the changes that are made in the ordinance are relating to golf course, golf courses and related facilities. And I realize it says related facilities, but I believe this is a use description in our code for golf courses. And so the code calls out where golf courses and related facilities are permitted, and this is a use, and these are standards by which community development staff determines whether a golf course can operate. So to me, the language is specific to golf courses and wouldn't apply to ag or other open spaces that aren't associated with golf course operation.
Okay, thank you. I think there's been enough on the record to, if something ever happens, somebody can come back and look at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Bryce.
Well, I appreciate, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate Mark bringing that up because even if it's not ag, you know, there are plenty of parcels within the valley that are not, that are less than 19 acres, but have plenty of pasture land, whether it's two acres, four acres, six acres, 10 acres, that we wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be subject to this as well because there's no means in which to irrigate it.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, Tom.
Tom Delaire for the record. I think to both your points, Mr. Nenrim and Mr. Klutz, that we have a property maintenance standard, so that would, those particular parcels would apply under that particular section. So if somebody, if you guys had eight-foot tile weeds, you know, we would send that property owner a letter and tell them to mow those down due to the fire hazard. We don't have a woo-wee code. I think once, you know, I know we've been talking about that. If it's within a woo-wee area, I think there's other provisions where other agencies then could enforce those fire hazards as well. But right now, the only thing that we have to go by that code enforcement can use, utilize is that property maintenance standard, you know, with the weeds growing on the property and causing a fire hazard. We send those letters out all the time, and that's how we would address those situations. This particular ordinance is actually specific to golf courses.
Thank you. Brian.
So, I mean, I guess what I'm hearing is this is only golf courses. This does not apply to anybody. We are only changing the residential fine, which is what applies to more people than just this golf course section. Is that what I'm hearing? Because I would love if you would send a letter to GRGID to get the weeds out of my backyard that's almost burned my house down three times, lightning strikes. So, you know, nowhere in this ordinance do we talk about anything other than golf courses being administered to this. Is that what I'm hearing? And I just want an affirmation of that.
Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Doug.
Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. That's correct. The main reason being is because this is, these are acres and acres of basically an artificial environment. It's not natural open space with sagebrush, nor is it agricultural operations, which are allowed under both NRS and our County Code. This is artificial environment that if not properly maintained, will become a hazard. It's like, it's like an orchid. It's beautiful, but if you don't maintain it, and it takes a lot of maintenance, it will die and become a hazard. And also, just to be clear, this is, the county is not suggesting that we interfere with their operations. The only issue is if they cease their commercial operations for a period of time, that they have to provide a maintenance plan. So they still have the right to continue to maintain it. We just want to make sure that there is some plan so that it doesn't become a hazard.
Thank you. Other questions from members of the Planning Commission?
Then I think the recommended changes would be in Section C and changing that from two weeks to 30 days and then deleting C3. So if there are other recommendations, we could hear those now, or we could move to a motion on this item. Bryce.
Public comment.
Oh, public comment. I'm sorry. We'll open this for public comment before we take a motion from the Planning Commission. Is there any public comment on action item number three? Seeing no public comment, then we'll come back to the Planning Commission for a motion. Bryce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recommend approval of ordinance 2021-1587 with the changes as proposed to the Board of County Commissioners.
Bryce has made a motion to approve the ordinance with the recommended changes. Is there a second?
Second.
Maureen seconds the motion. Is there discussion? I appreciate everybody's attention to this one and to the clarifications made by the District Attorney's Office and the Planning Commission members and the staff. I appreciate Jim Hartman's hard work on this. I guess he had to leave us, but I hope he's watching. And again, we applaud all citizen initiatives that allow us to do good work for the county. If there's no further discussion, then I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. On this vote, then there are six votes aye and no votes nay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. This is for possible action, discussing on, discussion on an ordinance 2021-1588 zoning text amendment to amend chapter 20.622 of the Douglas County Code related to vacation home rentals within the Tahoe Township and other related manners. I want to call people's attention to two things. I believe there was a incorrect or a typo in the summary section on page 68, the ordinance. The ordinance is 1588, not 1558, as it says in the summary. And it also indicates that in the title, I believe. So, the District Attorney's Office reminded me that the correct ordinance number is 1588. And then I would also call to everyone's attention that we did receive a public comment in the packets from the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe dated August 6th. The copy that I have, which I think was included with everybody's packet, did have agenda item number two, but it does properly state that this is agenda item number four in the title and the content of those comments. So, that's three pages of comments that Natalie Yanish submitted on behalf of the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe. Maureen, did I miss something?
We have 3A and 3B in our packets. 3B is a little bit different than 3A. Was the motion that we just had, did that cover both? Sam Taylor? The motion cover both 3A and 3B?
Packet page 61, 62, 63, because they're a little bit different from packet page 57, 58, 59.
I think it's the same content. I believe 3B was just a memorandum from Sam Booth that gave further explanation.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, Sam Taylor again, Douglas County DA. I think that is correct, what the Chair just said. Is that, that's a staff report from-
All right, just making sure, because I was reading both of them again, and wait a minute, the text is different.
Yeah, it was a staff report from, from Mr. Booth, meant to complement what Ms. Ritchie had presented.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. So, I've read into the record the ordinance, which is a zoning text amendment, and we have background materials in the packet. I think we can have a presentation. Sam Booth, are you going to start on this? And then we'll come up with questions and move to the, the proposed changes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Sam Booth. Once again, on this item, I'm going to defer to our District Attorney's Office to explain a little bit further. Of course, I think the Planning Commission is aware, the VHR ordinance as adopted is subject of pending litigation, and some of the changes made in the ordinance are, are to address that. And with that, I'll, I'll defer to Doug Ritchie.
Thank you, Sam. We appreciate all the good work you've done, all the issues that you've had to cover these days. And Doug, we appreciate your good assistance in supplementing his work. So, please proceed with your summation, and then we'll have questions and take action.
Thank you, Chairman, and Planning Commissioners. Again, I appreciate your time. It's been a long day. Again, for the record, the, the ordinance is 2021-1588, as indicated. The Planning Commission is well aware of the years of effort that have went into the VHR ordinance. Some of our residents have expressed some concerns about the ordinance as drafted. They felt so strongly, they filed a complaint in federal court and filed an ex parte motion for a temporary restraining order. The Honorable Judge Jones heard those arguments and denied many of their requests for a temporary injunction, but there were some issues the judge felt had some merit. In an effort to address those concerns, ordinance 2021-1588 is intended to clarify and resolve some of those concerns. I'm happy to go through them in detail, but I'll, just a simple example. One of the complaints was that the new fine schedule violated the Eighth Amendment against excessive punishment fines. The current fine for operating a VHR without a permit is $5,000. That was increased to $20,000 to deter people from illegally operating a VHR. The judge acknowledged that the, the county has the right to exercise police powers, but he's concerned that the $20,000 fine was all or nothing. There was no discretion in that. The practice is, as the Planning Commission is aware, the practice has always been that there's discretion with the board. In fact, there was an appeal from a nuisance fine, and it was reduced. But it made sense to clarify that, and so the language was changed to state that the fine can be up to $20,000. Again, each fine is based on the facts and circumstance of each violation, and it makes sense to allow the VHR advisory, I'm sorry, be the VHR, yeah, Advisory Board, the discretion to determine what an appropriate fine is based on, the particular facts of that case. Again, I'm, I'm happy to go over each of the changes. They tend to be fairly, fairly narrowly focused. One of the concerns the judge did have was that the composition of the Advisory Board was currently requires that a majority of the board be non-VHR permit holders. I had argued to the court that at the lake, there are only two groups of people. Either you have a permit or you don't have a permit, and that seemed to make sense that non-permit holders would be the majority, the split, the tie vote. The judge was still concerned, and, and the litigants were concerned that there might be some sort of bias. And so, the proposed language, I spoke with opposing counsel, and again, I don't want to speak for them, but I, the intent was to say, well, well, the, the tie vote will be somebody from the Carson Valley. They are neither a VHR permit holder, nor do they live next to one. Presumably, they won't have a bias either way because, for lack of a better term, they have a dog in the fight. They, it's, it's limited to the lake. Again, just in summary, the issue, this is a zoning matter within Title 20. It's residential zoning, and the question is, is what kind of commercial activities are allowed in residential use? And there are limited uses. You can have like a bed and breakfast. You can have a little hair shop out of your, your house with a special use permit. The question in this case is, there's a continuum. You have an owner living in the house, pure residential use. You're living in there, you're not renting it out. And then maybe one step up is what they call a true host in the ordinance, where you're still living in the house, but you have a guest that comes in, and you're, but you're onsite, you're there. And then on the far side of the continuum, you have a corporation owning multiple homes. Nobody lives there. It's strictly residential rental units, transient use. And so, within this continuum, I think both the Planning Commission, the Board of County Commissioners was trying to strike a balance between maintaining the residential character of neighborhoods, honoring the zoning for that area, while allowing some commercial activity to occur. I, I had hoped that there'd be some people here to help speak on this issue, from the litigants or their, their counsel. I know he's, he's actually out, I think, on vacation this week. But that's the, that's, that's the intent, is this, these amendments to the ordinance is not intended to rehash the whole VHR ordinance issue, but to narrowly address some of the issues that the plaintiffs have raised and that the court had concerns with.
Thank you very much, Doug. Questions from members of the Planning Commission for the staff? I have a couple of comments, and I do appreciate the hard work that staff has done on this. Appreciate the hard work that the VHR task force did on this. There were a number of people who worked long and hard to produce a good document. We heard this previously, and I think the consensus view of the Planning Commission was that the, the document that was produced by the board was flawed in many respects. We've now found out that the judge also thinks it was flawed in certain respects. And I would tend to agree that the, the staff has done an admirable job in trying to fix many of the flaws that were, were determined by the court case. I happen to think that's probably about 10 or 15 more flaws that may come up in other court cases or may arise down the road. But at this point, I think time is of the essence. We want to get a good ordinance in place. I think the key thing is to, to have the VHR, VHS Advisory Board functioning as soon as possible, and for them to take the experience that comes from the enforcement. And I know Tom Delaire, your, your team has done a very good job on starting the enforcement. I think if the VHR task force will come up with good recommendations that they can bring back to the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners for modifications or improvements, I think that's advisable. I would call attention to a couple of things that I think are, are still problematic. On page 71, the definition of bedroom under F, I think we've gone to great excess. I don't know if Brian has read this, but I think, given his comments before about overregulation and micromanaging, that's a, that's a prime example. I, I recognize that the Fire Marshal does want to have very strict standards for bedroom, but I can envision a bedroom that might be 10 times as large as 70 square feet and might not have the appropriate glazing or the appropriate exterior access, but might open onto four different other parts of the house that, that might not be a fire danger. But if that's the, if that's the direction the Fire Marshal prefers to go at this point, I hope that's, that's examined and it's not overly restrictive for properties that might have a, a safe facility. I, I also would call to attention something that, that the District Attorney's Office mentioned, which is the composition of the Advisory Board. I, I respect the compromise that is attempted in this by having a person from the East Fork Township on the Advisory Board. The concern that I have is that this is a Tahoe issue at this point. I know Mark has expressed the opinion that it should be open countywide, and at some point, it may be, may, may well be open countywide. But at this point, I would prefer to have some, some semblance of, of Tahoe Township involvement in every, every aspect of this and not have an individual from East Fork be judging something that they may have little knowledge or interest on. So, I hope the board, when they do make appointments, will give careful consideration to that appointment, and if possible, pick someone who was on the VHR task force, someone who has, has some demonstrated knowledge or involvement in the, in the process, because I do think that's a, that's an important position, and we hope that they give good recommendations to the, to the county upon review of this, so we can have a better regulation down the road. Again, I'm, I'm basically opposed to many sections of the way this is currently written, but I think in the interest of expediency and getting a better regulation on the books and formatted now, I think the, the recommendations made by staff are, are appropriate. So, I would yield to other members of the Planning Commission for comments or questions. Kristi, do you have any comments or questions at this point? If not, we can move to a public comment.
I just have general comments. I agree with you on most of those statements to where, do you think it's overreaching in a lot of those areas, and we will end up in litigation again? And then also, to your point, to your point about the, the Advisory Board and the person, I also agree that it, it should not be someone that is not in any way related to this topic or having, while they may be an impartial, unbiased party if they have no knowledge of this, I just don't see that being a good fit. So, you know, whether it's, let's get an active community member that's, you know, part of a community organization like Rotary, or just anything that, that could help show that someone is a participant, active participant in our community who cares about the overall well-being, I think that would serve us best from that aspect.
Thank you, Kristi. Brian?
So, I mean, I wasn't present at the last meeting. I did submit my comments. I'm sure everybody remembers, but, you know, I'm looking at this still, and like Kirk, I can't agree with any of it. I mean, if I wanted my mom here to tell me what to do, I'll move her here. You know, I don't need the county playing mom and dad. You know, when I look at this between the lake and the valley, not having it down here, I mean, we're creating a dichotomy of properties, and even a dichotomy within Tahoe Township. I mean, maybe they are the same zoning, but technically, they're different. You know, because one person has a permit, the other person doesn't. I had a client today from Big Bear who currently rents his property, and there was a huge argument over this exact thing. They have property owners hating each other because one person has a permit and another doesn't. We have property owners now that hate each other because the person's being, you know, having people stay there. But the other thing this doesn't address is what if I want to leave for two weeks and rent my home? You know, I'm not a vacation home. This is my residence. So, I'm turned into a vacation home because I wanted to take two weeks off and get paid for my mortgage? I mean, you know, I think we're just skirting an issue. We're creating a rule. We're creating a difference between the valley and the lake, and I think this is all Douglas County. This isn't the valley or the lake. If we continue to say the valley and the lake, we are going to act separate, and we are going to be different. And it's kind of a waste of time to say that one is different than the other when we're all Douglas County residents. We all pay the same taxes to the same place, and TOT taxes at the lake don't come down here. So, you know, we need TOT taxes down here, too. Why shouldn't we get that revenue as well? You know, we're restricting our revenue. We're restricting all sorts of good things that the county could do if we did actually allow vacation home rentals, and just use the permit process as a reason to remove the permit from the a-holes.
Thank you, Brian. Mark?
Yes, I agree with Brian. This should be a countywide issue. It shouldn't be just up at the lake or down at the valley. And the other thing that I disagreed with on the very first ordinance was, we need to include common forms of ownership in this, whether it be an LLC or a corporation. But as far as getting these changes made to the existing ordinance, I'm fine with them.
Thank you very much, Mark. You picked up on a point that I mentioned before, and I agree with you as well on the LLCs. I think that's been partially corrected, as they allow the existing ones to be grandfathered in, but I think you're creating two classes there, and that's, that's not a wise course of action. Any other comments from members of the Planning Commission? If not, we'll open this to public comment. Thank you for sticking around till the bitter end.
Okay, just make my office over there for now, so, good. Thank you once again. My name is Natalie Yanish. I'm with the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe. Thanks for hearing me out once again. I had included in the packet quite a few letters that were sent to the Douglas County Commissioners on objections that the Contractors Association had during the process when they were vetting the recommendations and creating this new ordinance. And I also thank the Chair, thank you Chair Walder for noticing that I did have the typo. It was supposed to be number four and not number two, but everything else looks like it was referenced properly in the letter. So, I didn't mean to overload you with information, but when, yesterday, I was going to give you public comment, it was really difficult for me to try to succinctly put it in one letter, because over time, this process, we've been going to the county commissioners with our objections. And I also did sit on the VHR task force during that entire time and spent quite a bit of time going through everything with a fine-tooth comb. I have to say, that's why I love the Planning Commission, because you also go through things with a fine-tooth comb before it goes to the Douglas County Commission. And that's a lot of time and effort, and your recommendations, you know, are important for them to consider. When they did look at the VHR task force recommendations, they- they did not adopt all of them. They did include quite a few that were in addition to what our stakeholder group had suggested. And unfortunately, now, you know, we're in a situation where there's litigation. I don't know what kind of discretion that you have, but I can say that this process, in my mind, has definitely been broken. And to continue to just try to put a Band-Aid or continue to adopt additional items or take a narrow focus, as Mr. Ritchie said, and these items that are being litigated is not a comprehensive policy. So I hate to say it, everyone has VHR fatigue, especially after you sit on committee meetings for two years, and then you go to Douglas County Commissioners and write ad nauseam letters that you send in. But at the same time, you know, in a perfect world, in my mind, it would be better to just scrap this entire process, go back to the original ordinance, and take another look at it. So as, it's up to you as a body to make whatever recommendation you're going to make. However, I just don't think that it's right to try to continue on with trying to add additional layers or removing items that are unpalatable at this point without more of a comprehensive look at the policy. So I really appreciate your time and all of your efforts, and thank you for reading through all of my letters. I know that probably took you a long time, and thanks for being here so late in the evening.
Thank you very much. Is there additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, we'll come back to the Planning Commission. I think, Natalie, we appreciate your diligence on this. I agree with you on almost all your points. And as I said before, I do hope that the VHR Advisory Board will come back to the county with recommendations that are based on actual experience and information that the board can use to construct a, an ordinance that is more meaningful and significant to what we have at the Tahoe Township and what it might eventually come to the Carson Valley. So hopefully, we'll have a good product in the long haul. So other comments from members of the Planning Commission, or we could have a motion to approve the ordinance as amended by staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Sam?
If I may. Sam Taylor, Douglas County DA's for the record. It's important in your motion to include the findings, if you would please, and how you found in relation to
Thank you very much. Sam Taylor, do we have a exact wording on that? I'm not seeing it right in front of me on the packet.
I'm not sure, but just a motion to approve the proposed changes, and based on the findings set out in the staff report.
Thank you, page 66. Brian, since you offered the page number, would you like to make the motion, or you want to defer?
I recommend we approve the motion with the staff changes, and that the staff believes that all findings can be made to approve the proposed zoning text amendment.
Thank you. This would be ordinance 2021-1588. Is there a second to Brian's motion for approval?
Second.
Maureen seconds the motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. On this vote, then there's six votes aye, no votes nay, and the motion is agreed to. That concludes the agenda. We will now move to closing public comment. Any members of the public that would like to make closing public comment at this If there are no members of the public to make closing public comment, I would like to thank the staff for their very hard work. We had a lot of items with very contentious issues that were raised, the planning staff, the community development staff. The DA's office has done an excellent job, as usual. We appreciate the hard work of the Clerk's Office and everybody else who's been involved in the meeting. I thank my fellow Planning Commissioners for their good efforts. And if there's nothing else, I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.